Okay, good evening. The time is now six o'clock and I would like to welcome everybody to general meeting of the Galt City Council for May the 4th, 2021. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we have to continue to handle our city council meetings much differently than we usually do for the protection of the public and our city staff. I'm going to ask our city manager, Mr. Heinz, to give a brief explanation to the public. Sir?
Good evening, City Manager Lorenzo Heinz. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference slash video conference in compliance with the state and county stay-at-home orders. And as allowed by the governor's executive order N dash 29 dash 20, which allows for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Members of the public will see the council members and city staff who are appearing via remote video slash telephone connections. City council meetings will be held virtually by teleconference or video conference only until further notice. Today's agenda states that rather than attending in person, residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting. Any written comments that were received will be read out loud by the city council meeting during the city council meeting by the city clerk on the appropriate agenda item subject to the customary five-minute time limit. Unless the same individual also appears and requests to speak live during the meeting. We will take live comments first and then the written comments will be read out loud. We are also using the Zoom webinar format, which allows the public to provide live public comment. Members of the public may use the link to enter the webinar as attendees. They should not, or they should be able to use the raise their hand option in the Zoom webinar to let us know if they would like to speak and should do so when the mayor announces the time for general public comment or when a specific agenda item is called if your comment concerns an agenda item. We request, as we do at typical, as we do typically in council meetings, that speakers provide their name and address when they are called and their line is unmuted and they can speak at that time. Attendees should also see lower their hand feature if they change their mind and do not want to speak. And by the way, submitting your name and address is, is requested, but it is not required.
All right.
That concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. I'd like to now call the meeting to order. Ms. Hubert, if you can give us a roll call.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Papano.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here.
So before we continue with the silent prayer, I just wanted to note, we know that there's an outage with Xfinity right now of a large amount of the East Side of Galt and I've been getting a lot of people trying to get on with their phones, so we apologize for that and I just want to warn you Tina of an advance, we might get a lot of people trying to speak or something coming in on telephone, so. Anyways, we'll have to just work through this, so. Apologies for the struggle. So if everyone would like to join us in a silent prayer and then we'll follow that with a flag suit. Well, now do our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Tina, if you would like to do our replay statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U verse cable systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, May 7th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, May 8th at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel.
All right, we'll go on to our first item, item B, agenda approval additions and/or deletions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I may, Mayor and Council, we need additional, an additional amount of time for the, for the public hearing to complete follow-up with the Fair Political Practices Commission and to ensure the remaining steps required to comply with the CEC grant, so we are requesting that the council continue the public hearing on Corleone Boulevard corridor plan to June 15th, 2021, a regular, a regular city council meeting beginning at 6:00 p.m.
Okay, do I have a motion to continue the public hearing on Corleone Boulevard plan to the regular meeting on June 15th, 2021 at 6:00 p.m.?
I still move.
Moved by Councilmember Vandenberg. I will second. Go ahead and give that to Councilmember Papano. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papano.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Motion path is five to zero. Are there any other agenda additions or deletions from council? No? Okay. Then we will proceed on to item C, presentations. Do we have any this evening?
None this evening.
All right. Next will be item D, your public comment. Tina?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency and social distancing guidelines, public comments may be submitted via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org and we will read out loud subject to the customary five-minute time limitation. Also, members of the public may participate electronically via HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash And I have received three written comments. So the first one is on the Galt market plan. This is from Bob and Tara Wilson. We are hoping that we can use some of the land for a licensed vocational nursing program. This vocation facility center could house additional career options. This will help create more jobs for the community such as welding, highway construction, mass transit, mass transit construction, mill construction, solar construction and installations, electric battery operated car construction, et cetera. A task force would be needed to see if viable. People would really need to be motivated to bring and or relocate a vocational school to Galt. It would have to be a facility that would be flexible enough to grow with new upcoming industries. Not only would it bring students and faculty to Galt from elsewhere, but would also benefit businesses such as local grocery stores, restaurants, retail, and it would help create the demand for the Galt market. It would, it could provide a workforce for all of Galt's businesses. Hopefully, this vocational school should allow some type of college credit to further some students' education. Entertainment for all age groups. Could there be a bocce ball shuffleboard courts in the Galt market plan? Example, one court could be for novices and one court could be for team playing. It would be near the Galt Market senior living area. It would be more for the non-athletic type people. Parking for the Galt Market. Some parking could be placed on the rooftops of multiple buildings. The parking spots could have solar panels above the spaces. This could also provide shade. Another idea is to have one rooftop restaurant or coffee shop with a view. Thank you for your consideration. Next is from Joe Batondo. I am commenting on behalf of the city of Galt's oldest and largest charitable organization, the Galt Lions Club. I am not aware if the entire council is aware that the walk-in refrigerator at the Littleton Center has been broken for over a year. The loss of that refrigerator impacts the rentability of that building. The building's namesake was also Galt Lion as dedicated his life towards serving our community here. About a year ago, the Lions Club offered to pay to have the refrigerator fixed, so all of the local nonprofits that use that building could benefit from the use of that refrigerator. The Lions Club was able to get a licensed repair person to donate the labor and we would cover the costs necessary, the costs necessary parts. However, both the last city manager and the current one have given us the runaround on this project. From my understanding of the park's budget, the city cannot afford to turn away free help. At our most recent meeting discussion on this project went as follows. If the city is going to give us the runaround and not approve this project, then we will take the money and put it towards another project that does not require assisting the city government. This is our last ditch offer to cut the red tape and let us fix the refrigerator. On another note, we are excited to hear Mr. Heinz mention at the last council meeting regarding the market plan that he would be reaching out to our club to present the plan and take input from the community. We have yet to hear from Mr. Heinz, so we are extending him an invitation to one of our meetings. We meet the second and fourth Thursday of every month at 6:30. We would be thrilled to put the city man, manager on our agenda. The last one I have is actually on, was submitted by the Galt Chamber on behalf of a resident of Galt who did not give their name. This morning, a resident of Galt stopped by to express her concerns in regard to decreasing the amount of parking that is currently available for the Galt flea market. As a resident of Galt near G and Church Streets, she already has issues leaving her home on a Tuesday or Wednesday. Upon returning on those days, she has no place to park near her home. She would like to see parking increased rather than decreased and is hoping to have this discussed at the council meeting tonight. One suggestion she had was to move the veterans field and to turn that space into additional parking for the market. Yes, and then this is unfortunately, she did not wish to leave her name or phone number. And that's all I have for written comments.
Okay, thank you Tina. And thank you for those that did submit comments if you are watching and your input. Do we have any hands raised online?
We currently do not have any hands raised online.
All right, we will proceed on to our next item. Item E, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions and committees. We will start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have that much report, but I do have the meeting on April 26th with the South Sacramento Conservation Agency. There was a couple of item. One was the item, the project, it was in Rancho Cudobah. So that we prove it. The other thing was a closed session I cannot discuss, but that was the public employer performance valuation the executive director. And you know, when you do another agency, you learn how they do it. But that's why the closed session, so I cannot discuss. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Councilmember Papano.
On April 22nd, we had the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District Board meeting. Most of that dealt with public hearing on the budget, currently sits at a $3 million deficit and possibilities to address that as it appears to be growing as we go forward. We will hopefully have a budget in place at next month's meeting, or actually this month's meeting on May 27th. Additionally, the district received a U EPA targeted airshed grant. And it's $2.7 million for wood stove changeouts. So if that is something that anybody could benefit from, the air quality district website has all of the application information. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilmember Vandenberg.
I have nothing to report at this time.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilmember Lozano.
I have nothing to report other than I do have a SECOD Policy and Innovation Committee meeting on the 10th, and so I'll report back on that at our next meeting.
All right, thank you, sir. Myself, I attended the, a special public safety meeting last night where we discussed some traffic concerns that have been being received by myself and some other council members regarding pedestrian safety and speeding and that sort of thing. We shared some ideas. Our, our new interim chief, Small, was able to share some data with the committee members and we were able to kind of go around and get some ideas from the committee members. The, the meeting was attended by several council members as, as observance. And I think we came up with some, you know, some ideas to, to start. You know, being proactive, mixture of using some existing resources and maybe some new resources to streamline the point of contact for these concerns in our city. So I'm looking forward to seeing what our city manager comes back with on that very soon. And it is something we are focused on for those of you that are watching. I was unable to attend the youth commission meeting unfortunately last night because of the conflict with the other meeting, but I do want to wish in this forum, the outgoing mentors, wish them success in their future endeavors for both our youth and adult mentors. And thank you for your service on the committee and also a special thanks to Mr. John Gordon, who has served as an adult mentor for a very long time on the youth commission. He's been very instrumental in that committee and, or the commission. And obviously, the commission wouldn't be the same without him. So thank you, Mr. Gordon, for all your dedication. And I know it pains you to step away from that organization, so thank you for, for, for all your commitment to that. And that is all I have. So without further ado, we will move on to item F, which is our information consent calendar. It is recommended that items one through two be acted simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. Item one is going to be the minutes of the special meeting of April 16th, 2021 and the regular meeting of April 20th, 2021. Item number two is going to receive and file warrants for the period ending April 21st, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Moved.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Vandenberg. Tina, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu. Councilmember Papano.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Consent calendar approved, five to zero. We'll now move on to item G, which is scheduled matters, notice of public hearing. And for those of you that have possibly joined our meeting late and missed the beginning, we are moving the public hearing on the Corleone Boulevard corridor plan. There was a motion and a second and a five oh vote to move that to the next regular meeting on June the 15th of 2021 at 6:00 p.m. So we will be moving that item to that meeting. So please tune back in if you are interested in hearing that. We will move on to item one, which is the draft 2021 to 2029 housing element update by Mr. Craig Hoffman. Craig?
Aye. Good evening, Mayor, member of the, members of the council. Tonight, you are going to be reviewing our draft housing element. And if I can share my screen, if I could. Is everyone seeing that? Okay. And joining me tonight for the presentation of this item will be Rick Rust and Amy Yang with Mentor Harnish. So tonight, the city council is being requested to review the draft 2021, 2029 housing element update and direct staff to submit the document to the Department of Housing and Community Development to start our 60-day review and comment period. The city council is not adopting or approving the draft housing element document at this time. Again, this is just to start the review process. The 2021, 2029 housing element update is an update to the existing 2013, 2021 housing element. This effort does not constitute a new document for the community. It's an update and it's driven by the regional housing needs allocation inventory numbers as well as substantial changes to state housing law since the existing housing element was updated or adopted in February of 2014. So I believe, do I have Rick and Amy with me?
Yes, they are on the line. They will just need to unmute their screen to join the conversation.
Okay. At this point in time, I'd like to turn over the presentation, if I could, again, to Rick Rust and Amy Yang with Mentor Harnish, who's been our, our guides through this process. They've been invaluable as consultants to the city.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor and council members and the community that may be watching us online. We want to go through tonight, a little background on the housing element and how we kind of got here and where we're going as far as our next steps. As Mr. Hoffman mentioned, this isn't the end, this isn't the approval process, but it is an important step in moving this forward and getting state's certification. So we'll talk about the schedule. We'll review some of the major changes in state law that are driving some of the changes in the housing element before you and talk about some of the major changes that we've made otherwise and then highlight just the next steps going forward. Next slide. So this lists the engagement that we've had on the project. Given COVID, we've been utilizing the planning commission as our main sounding board to get community input as well as the commissioner's guidance on technical issues. We met with the council at a study session back in December, the first time we provided an introduction of where we're going and what the hell they were covering. And then the intermediary months, we met with the planning commission to go through a range of topics, the overall housing needs assessment, what were the constraints to providing housing, a look at the housing sites inventory and how we could achieve what the state is asking us to as far as our regional housing needs allocation. And then the planning commission provided their recommendation to the council to forward this on T H C D at their meeting on April 22nd. So tonight, we're here for the council to answer any questions and hopefully get your acknowledgement to pass this off to the state for their initial 60-day review. Next slide. So we're looking at here on our overall schedule with your concurrence tonight and agreement to move this forward. We'll package the document up and get it all ready to go to the state on next, mid next week. And with that, it'll start a 60-day review process, which will end in the early parts of July. Now during the 60-day review process, usually HCD takes about the first 30 to 40 days to do the review. And then we work in the last part of that review cycle to formulate ways to address their comments and to come to some agreement on what should be contained in the next version of the document. This will come back then with the changes addressing HCD's comments and we'll have public hearings with the planning commission and public hearing with the city council. At that point, this will be the final approval of your housing element. They will have gone through state review. And with the work back and forth, you should be in a position to approve and have some certainty that you will get the certification from HCD. HCD actually does one final look to make sure everything's in order. This final look, which is your certification letter, takes 90 days after that process. So as far as the basics of housing elements, first couple of slides may be a repeat of what you saw in December, but just to highlight where we're at and where we're going. The housing element purpose is to provide an assessment of both current and future housing needs. We do look at what has happened in the past, what are the successes of your old element and how we've addressed those problems going forward. We had to look at the opportunities and constraints to housing production, especially things that may cause us issues in producing the housing that the state is looking for. And then we provide the goals, policies and programs, which are representing what are the ways to address the problems identified in the previous two bullets. So we look at our housing element basics. We're looking for an element that identifies programs and strategies that address these following five main tops. Topics, conserving and improving existing affordable housing. If we already have affordable housing on, make sure that we don't lose any of our existing inventory if we could help it. Maximizing housing opportunities throughout the community to take the best advantage of providing housing to meet the needs of all income ranges. Assisting the provision of affordable housing. This is obviously a focus of the state because providing for affordable housing, those in the lower, very low income categories is the hardest to achieve in a market economy. And so how do we help meet those needs? Removing governmental or other constraints to housing production. That is, how can we help to get out of the way and help make housing a reality for all the different households and the needs of the community? And then looking to provide and promote fair and equal housing opportunities throughout the community. Amy will be presenting some information on a affirmatively furthering fair housing, which is a major new component of housing element law and one of the big changes that went forward. Now, as far as the regional housing needs allocation, this was originally derived at the state level and then passed down to SECOD. And from SECOD, they provided a methodology which distributed the number of units required to each of the jurisdictions in the SECOD region, including the counties that are part of that and the cities they're in. Now, we're in what's called the sixth, number six cycle, which runs from this year and eight years out into the future. You may notice that date, we go back one slide. The sixth cycle actually starts next week. We actually are moving forward. You have 120-day grace period to have your element finally adopted by the council within that 120-day grace period from that cycle. So with the schedule I laid out before will be well within that timeline. So it's an important timeline for us to meet. Now, the next. So this is a chart just showing the implications of this arena. And we wanted to show what was required for the community in the fifth cycle or the current housing element you're under and what has changed in the sixth cycle. As you can see in that line of change, there has been a significant increase in what the state's requiring the city of Galt to provide. And Galt is certainly not alone in this. Increases of 200 to 400% have been pretty typical across the range of California and for those areas currently looking at their housing elements. But you can see in general, you're around three times higher in your arena requirements than you were in the last cycle. Now, in the very low and low income, these are the big numbers that we have to make sure we meet. But I, it's also important to note that this provides for the whole range of housing. It's all the way up to above moderate housing. So we have to provide a look at housing for all income levels. And again, the very low and low are the most difficult to achieve. That's where a lot of the policy work is focused because of that. But the big number is 1926. You see that on the top of the slide. That's the total units. In the very top of the slide shows you the breakdown. Now, for citing analysis, the state allows us to combine very low and low into one category called lower income. We have to provide 647 housing sites. And I say housing sites because the city is not required to build this. You're not developers, you're not in a position to build housing, but you're in the position to identify sites that can sustain the types of densities required to provide lower income housing. Now, in the region, that usually is more than 20 DU's per acre. And that's what's being looked at as far as the basic requirements for a bulk density. And we went through a process to look at what could be achieved by looking at planned and approved projects. We looked at existing vacant property within the community. We looked at some vacant sites which are going through annexation or could go through annexation and come into the community. And then we also looked at accessory dwelling units or ADUs. Now, the number of ADUs is higher than you typically produce, but we have programs included in the housing element which helps to encourage the provision of ADUs. Now, accessory dwelling units are allowed by law. And you actually on a given property could have two ADUs per single family home or even a multi-family development. So these are important part. The only thing we got advantage here is we got to count for a higher number than you currently produced as part of our look. Now, we get down here, you will notice that we are producing more units than the state has down for arena. Now, that's important to note because Now, that's important to note because HCD is currently asking that communities look to provide at least 15 to 30% over your Rena as a backup, if you will. New state law requires that there be no net loss in housing. So if you counted a site to provide 100 low-income housing units and that property, when it developed, only provided 60, you have to make up those missing 40 units and you have to do that within 90 days. So having some backup sites identified and ready to go is critical for you to maintain compliance with the state. Next slide. The housing element you received contains, is broken into two documents. We have one, which is the background report. That's everything you want to know about housing in the community, whether it be past or whether it be projections into the future. So these are the trends dealing with demographic issues, dealing with current housing supply, dealing with current housing production, dealing with current laws. The policy document boils it down to, these are the things we're looking to do to address housing needs within the community. Slide. Now, some major changes since the fifth cycle. We obviously updated the existing conditions component or that background report and the constraints that are keeping us from having our housing development accomplished. We also updated the housing sites inventory and these were the key focus of those planning commission workshops held between January and March of this year. We've also updated the policies and programs and I believe you were provided both a clean version as well as a redline version, which showed the changes made over time. And as I mentioned, the big changes are affirmatively furthering fair housing, which will, Amy will get to in just a minute. Next slide. So as far as the policy document itself, its main purpose is provide a framework to guide the city's decision-making. Now, the housing element is just like all the other elements that comprise your general plan. The only difference is that this one has a specific state timeline and it has a specific state approval process or certification process. So that's how it differs, but otherwise it's like your land use element, the circulation element, other components that make up your general plan. And it contains three key pieces. Goals, which set out the ideal future condition. The policies, that is, the positions you're taking to achieve those goals. Then programs which provide very specific actions that the city will undertake to meet that policy and goal that they're supporting. Now, when you look at the goals and policies, they're broken down into the following major topic areas. Housing production, which was also in your last element, but called adequate housing sites. We talked about housing preservation, special housing needs such as large families or housing for seniors. Residential energy conservation. The new section on affirmatively furthering fair housing. Residential development constraints and how to overcome them. Environmental justice, which is also new. Environmental justice relates to the placement of residential to make sure that you don't put them in areas disproportionately that are adverse. That is, so that all of your low-income housing is not located against the freeway, for instance. And then community engagement on housing resources. This was another new component added to the element overall. Next slide. When we look at the overall housing elements, new state law changes were obviously put into the document. It was, we changed it. We have new ADU standards, new objective design standards, permit processes. There's new state requirements for density bonus. In all, there's about 27 new laws that have gone into effect since your last housing element was certified. So it's a big amount of change and wanted to highlight this, and this is a big part of the change in the document is for a lot of this, there's a lot of terms of shell. The city shall do certain things. That's because you're in compliance with state law. And a lot of the items contained in the policy and the programs are there to reflect requirements made to the city by the state. So these 27 laws have passed down a wide range of requirements and that's where a number of the changes made in the document are coming from. And then we've highlighted the affirmatively furthering fair housing and environmental justice components. Now, environmental justice is a requirement that comes along when you update your housing element and it can be part of another element. It can be spread throughout a number of elements, or in this case, we've highlighted ones that relate to housing inside your housing element. Community engagement and how you're sharing is also important. As noted in the document, community engagement's been more difficult, just as your council meetings have been, I'm sure, with lack of direct access to public meetings. We have done the best we can by using the Planning Commission as that public forum to allow people to come in and talk. We've also provided information out to the community on this update of the elements. Other key changes went through is to streamline language and to take out programs that have already been completed. So to reflect the fact that you have made progress since your last cycle like that going forward. I'm going to briefly highlight, there'll be a number of things shown in the next few slides. I'm not going to read all of them, but I want to highlight a few key components going forward. But as we look at the slides, the items in green are new additions. The items in orange are changes. Now, this isn't a complete look at everything that was in the document, but there's some key pieces that we want to just highlight a few of them as we go through this. Next slide. So under the updating and development code, a number of changes have been proposed for your zoning code. Now, these changes will primarily be done in the first three years after adoption. That's the timeframe that HCD finds acceptable. And the main reason for that is when you look at the housing element, it covers an eight-year period. You're supposed to be presenting projects and properties that could be completed within that eight-year cycle. So if there's some changes to your zoning code requirement, they have to be done within the first three years. So there's time available for the actual projects to be developed. On the list, you highlight like on the top, we have HE, which stands for Elliot Housing Element. And Program G and Program H are both examples of ones that have been changed to reflect state law. So as far as the city will need to go through and update its density bonus rules to make sure they fully comply with the new density bonus requirements of the state. And the accessory dwelling pieces will be updated to match all the changes in state law relative to accessory dwelling units. You'll see item T, Low Barrier Navigation Center. If you're not familiar with the term, in the past, we may have called it a homeless shelter, but it's much more than that. And that this is a shelter that provides not only temporary housing, but it also provides transitional facilities. Case managers, the ability to provide some training and other public health benefits. In other ways, it's more supportive of getting individuals experiencing homeless back out into real-world productive setting. Next slide. I'm going to skip most of this because Amy's going to talk about it, so I won't give you a preview of that too much, but we go to the next one after that. As you can see, there's quite a bit of change regarding AFFH. One of the big pieces is education is a key component of that and the engagement of all communities or all components of your community into the decision-making process is a big piece of the changes that were in this section. Next. Now, the staff report, it did mention the fact we had HE seven. The goal was copied from another one improperly. And so we did want to change that to make sure it reflected environmental justice. And I mentioned we'd have environmental justice related to residential citing. We have introduction of incompatible uses in the residential areas and to reduce environmental implications on residential neighborhoods. And this is to make sure that we don't have disproportionate environmental effects upon any given group or income within the community. Next. Community engagement is also new for the housing element and that this provides a way to encourage community engagement and the sharing of information on housing resources. HE dash M, the orange one there. While the city does provide information on zoning currently on the website, you also now need to make available a wide range of information such as development standards, fees, and exactions. All that information has to be easily accessible to anyone that's interested in developing housing. GG talks about a database of lower-income housing in the city and the creation of that. So it's providing again, resources that are valuable to individuals looking for housing, looking for housing to meet the needs of their household. And then with the next slide, Craig will transfer over to Amy to give you the details on affirmatively furthering fair housing.
Right. So as you guys have heard, there are a lot of new laws that this housing element has to address. And among them is AB 686, which addresses affirmatively furthering fair housing or AFFH. This is a really big ticket item with the state. And as you, you've seen in the previous slides, a lot of new policies and programs have come out of this requirement. So AB 686 requires jurisdictions to take actions to overcome patterns of segregation, address disparities in housing needs and access to opportunities, assess and address fair housing practices, examine relationships, the relationship between sites and areas of high opportunity. And finally, identify contributing factors, including actions to affirmatively further fair housing practice, practices. So in this way, this, the way this housing element will address all of these requirements is through a lot of the policies and programs that we're introducing in this housing element, which Rick has gone over. And you may have remembered Rick saying in a previous meeting that HCD is in a show-me mode. And so the way that we are showing HCD is through, not just through an analysis of these issues or a discussion of these issues, but through policies and programs that actually address these issues that we have analyzed. And I would just like to note that the AFFH section in the background report was prepared by SAICOG's consultant, who regularly coordinates with the state, which is a good thing because AFFH in this round has constantly evolved what HCD has been looking for. So what we have from SAICOG's consultant is kind of the latest and greatest in terms of what HCD is looking for in this section. I will also note that the maps came in, a new set of maps came in after this document was released. So the maps in this presentation are slightly more updated than the ones that you see in your packet. But these new maps will also be reflected in the draft that we sent to HCD. All right. So based on the findings from SAICOG's consultant, who performed the analysis of fair housing issues, fair housing issues in Galt are primarily related to limited access to opportunities in and around the city, a slight susceptibility for displacement and overcrowding. So the next few slides will highlight the major areas of analysis that have led to these conclusions. We are also required to identify contributing factors to fair housing issues. In response to the fair housing analysis conducted by the SAICOG consultant, we have identified the following contributing factors. So availability of affordable units, access to opportunity and land use and zoning laws. So what I'll be presenting in the next couple of slides is basically an overview of the fair housing issues and how this housing element addresses the contributing factors. Next slide, please. Great. So the first identified fair housing issue is access to opportunities. TCAC stands for California Tax Credit Allocation Committee. So basically, the HCD TCAC maps display areas that offer low-income children. An adult's the best chance at economic advancement, high educational attainment and good physical and mental health. So the primary function of a TCAC map or of TCAC is to oversee the low-income housing tax credit program, which provides funding to developers of affordable rental housing. So this, these opportunity maps play a critical role in shaping the future distribution of affordable housing in areas with the highest opportunity. So these maps are also the combination, are derived from the combination of considering economic, educational and environmental opportunities. So on the map on the right, you'll see that areas to the east of Highway 99 are slightly higher in opportunities. So like the blues and the greens in the map, areas to the west of Highway 99 are slightly lower in opportunity. So this is really important in considering where housing is going to be invested or housing funding will be invested in the city. All right, next slide, please. This is just a breakdown of some of the factors that go into the overall TCAC map that you saw on the previous slide. On the left side, you see the educational opportunities are higher on the north side of the city and slightly lower on the south side of the city. On the right side, the map shows economic opportunities. And this is a little bit more mixed around the city, but generally to the east of Highway 99, slightly higher opportunities in terms of economic opportunities. And to the west of Highway 99, there you'll find some areas that are slightly lower in economic opportunities. Additionally, when assessed from a regional perspective, disparities in access to opportunities exist. So many areas near Galt, particularly Out Grove and nearby unincorporated Sacramento County areas have a significantly greater proportion of high resource areas. Next slide, please. Right. So the next fair housing issue is a susceptibility to displacement. So the data in this section comes from a study conducted by the UC Berkeley Urban Displacement Project. And basically, it identifies communities that are vulnerable to displacement. A community that is vulnerable to displacement is vulnerable if it is, if its proportion of very low-income residents is over 20%, its share of renters is over 40%, its share of people of color is over 50%, its share of very low-income households that are severely rent burdened is over the county median. And finally, if nearby areas have been experiencing displacement pressures as well. So a displacement is not just contained in one neighborhood, which is why that last bullet point is really important. Next slide, please. So this is just a map from the data from UC Berkeley Urban Displacement Project. You'll see that areas down the center of Galt are slightly more vulnerable to displacement than other areas. Next slide, please. So the third fair housing issue identified is overcrowding. So overcrowding is basically, the prevalence of overcrowding indicates that people living together, people are living together to offset high housing costs. And this often occurs more often with renters and homeowners. And in Galt, it occurs more often with households that identify as Hispanic, Latino, multiracial or other race. And so this difference is shown in the chart on the right. And you'll see that there's a pretty big difference between those three groups versus any of the other groups found in the city. And so this difference or disparity in rates is actually a major impediment to fair and equal housing. Next slide, please. Great. So in response to the fair housing issues, we have to identify contributing factors. The first contributing factor to our fair housing issues is the availability of affordable housing units. And so I've listed a bunch of programs on the right side that are found, that are listed in this housing element that address this contributing factor. So through the implementation of these programs, we will be able to better provide availability to affordable housing units in Galt. And so generally, these programs will work to ensure the availability of land to provide incentives to build at higher densities, as well as to provide incentives to expedite development processes. Next slide, please. So the next contributing factor is access to opportunity. So this relates to those TCAC maps. Again, the programs on the right are the programs in the housing element that will work to address and improve access to opportunities across the community. And generally, these will involve continuing to share information on housing resources, continuing to work with local agencies like South County Services, continue and considering equity in the provision of public services and community facilities. Next slide, please. Great. So finally, the last contributing factor is land use and zoning laws. So many of the new housing laws that are driving a lot of the changes in this housing element do also benefit jurisdictions by streamlining a lot of the, by streamlining the development of affordable housing types. So having a housing element that is compliant with state law is good because it keeps it eligible for all sorts of regional, state and housing funding that is coming from the state. And it will work to make sure that land use and zoning laws are not prohibiting the development of affordable housing. So the, so implementing these programs really should help make it easier to develop affordable housing and/or housing that is available to sensitive populations such as older residents or people. and/or housing that is available to sensitive populations such as older residents or people experiencing homelessness. All right, so that, I'll wrap up my AFFH discussion right there, and I'll turn it back to Rick.
There's a map if we need to get to that later. And Mr. Hoffman highlighted the actions that are being looked at for the council tonight. We'd like your blessing to send this on to HCD for that initial sixty-day review. Between now and the next several months, there'll be the opportunity for additional comments or the public wish to provide them into the process. And we'll also have public hearings with both the Planning Commission and the City Council, once we get in the July-August timeframe. So there are additional opportunities for more public engagement going forward. I did want to note at the Planning Commission, one of the comments that came up was, do we need all these shells inside the document? There was quite a few. And so we said that we would go back through the document and verify that. I think one note in here is that a lot of the shells come with a softer component attached to it. That is, it says items like the city shall encourage, or the city shall promote. So those give you some wiggle room as far as what you need to do to encourage or promote going forward. So we think that those are still okay. The only one you could look at maybe for the should versus shall would be HE one point seven, which is on the local housing trust fund. But even that one says the city shall consider the creation of a local housing consideration does not obligate you to take an action. So when reviewing these, most of them have that wiggle room where they should have that wiggle room. And the ones that the state is requiring you to do are very specific. And the shell is very appropriate in those cases because HCD will be looking to see that the city is standing up in performing what they're asking you to do going forward to be in compliance with all these new state laws. So with that, we'd be happy to turn it back to Mr. Mayor and have any questions or comments from that.
Mayor, before I turn right back to the council, I just add, there are a number of policies that we need to make sure are in place. But it's important that we put those policies in place. Again, we're providing the opportunities for something to take place in making sure that we have all these policies. That they're correct, that we're providing the right information, the right opportunities means that it helps our community maintain its independence, that we're able to decide, you know, what goes where and what it looks like. If we don't have those policies in place, the state can come in and override our, our legal authority and land use. So we really, it's important that we make sure that all these policies are in place in the long run. And we have a lot of work ahead of us over the next few years to make sure we get this all in place. And I turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman, and thank you, Mr. Rust and Ms. Yang. Before I go to the council for some comments or questions, I wanted to start off because I have lots, and so I would kind of break mine up a little bit. You know, it was interesting what you just said, Craig, about, you know, independence. I mean, I understand this whole thing and I get, I think the council understands that this is something that we're being, I, I, I find it far from independence. I feel like it's like, you know, we are given the opportunity to make certain choices, but it's like, here, you need to do this. And we're going to give you A or B, so you decide what you want to do. I mean, it's frustrating to me, and this is just me venting, so I apologize, but it's frustrating to me, living in this town my entire life, that roughly about sixty percent of the people in this community either want really very slow growth or don't want any growth at all. And here we are faced with our state, in all their glory, again, shoving down the throats of small towns like ours, saying, we have to grow and we have to do it in this way. And we have to try to control things that really, in my opinion, are very uncontrollable, such as like one of your maps where it shows like the older part of town being, you know, most likely to be displaced. Well, yeah, you know, we probably have some of our lower-income people living in that area. I mean, how do we control, how do we control rent? Do we force rent control? Do we tell property owners you can't charge, you know, what the market dictates? I mean, to me, this whole thing, you know, like you said, twenty-seven new, I found the same number as I was doing my research, twenty-seven new, twenty-seven pieces of legislation that have been passed down to tell cities what they can and can't do and how to do it. To me, it's just really frustrating, like, to just say, and I know that, again, so the public is watching, doesn't mean we have to go build these things. But what I'm concerned is, this would be my first question to you, Mr. Rust, or whichever, whichever can you answer best. How is, how is this going to, my concern would be this going to handcuff the city council. I mean, the city council, our job is to, you know, enact policies that reflect what the voters that put us in office want to do. So, i.e. the community or the city. So if we were told, you know, we have to earmark property A for this, property B, and so far, we said all, we zone all this and we become compliant with this, are we going to be in a position where a project comes along to the city council, whether it's this council or a council in five or ten years from now? And then we get in a position where we are not able to say, you know, we don't really like that project, we don't think it's right for Galt, we're going to say no. Because that's what I see coming here. I see, I see the inability for us to really be making any decisions. We're going to be tied into a certain layout that we cannot dictate, we cannot, you know, detour from. Because maybe we don't have, I know there's a whole net loss thing where if like, somebody comes in, okay, well, that was earmarked for high density, but it's a really good project for low density, we're going to go and prove that, but now we got to go over here and find another spot that we could, you know, make that up somewhere. I mean, that's only going to be able to happen, you only going to be able to do that shell game so much, and then you're going to run out. I am just concerned that this is the type of thing that handcuffs, you know, a council like ours. Do you, do you have a comment on that, Mr. Rust? I mean, I know this is your wheelhouse, so.
In the scheme of things, Galt came out better than other places we've been dealing with because the amount of rezoning that you had to do to accomplish the housing element was very small. Large in the scale of Galt, I would say, but nine point nine acres was rezoned to an R four designation, or for a designation, actually. So you were able to meet most of your requirements through projects you already have been proposed to your community. So it's things that are already being considered, things that have already been approved but haven't been built yet. So in a broad sense, there's not as substantial a change going forward as it may have been. We've got a lot of other communities that actually had to convert industrial space to housing in order to meet their RENA application. So I think you fared fairly well, if that's any consolation for all that. But as far as constraining you, as I said, most of your need is being met by projects you've already got in the pipeline. So I think they're probably fairly consistent with the overall desires of the community, based on the fact they're following your current rules. So I think you're faring out well that way.
What I would also, oh, sorry, Mayor, I would also say we've had several meetings with HCD. And we put out a methodology to them in which we identified Galt's a slow-growing community, we're a rural community, our densities aren't as high as in other cities. And they understood that methodology. They agreed that our lots are bigger, there's an opportunity for a lot of accessory dwelling units. Where we're seeing a lot of urban jurisdictions, their high density is coming in over thirty units per acre. For us, they allowed to, the twenty, twenty units that we existing, that we have existing. So I think our community was given a lot of flexibility and we were able to meet our sights. I think when it comes to regional identity or the individual identity, identity of a community, what does it look like? It is identifying where these higher-density sites are going to be. And as you see the screen, these sites are dispersed throughout the community. And I think, yeah, we have some challenges ahead of us. But again, we've provided the opportunity, we've done what we need to. And as far as these twenty-seven laws, you know, staying focused, being a part of the League of California Cities, you see all these ABs and Senate bills. We just need to make sure that we're talking to our representatives and making sure as these laws come down, that we're being fairly represented.
I mean, the sad thing is that we're, we're a small-town sandwiched in with a bunch of metropolitan areas. And I think that, you know, going forward, our voice is very small, and we're a small fish in a big pond. And lobbying, you know, California League of Cities or anything like that, to me is swimming upstream. Mr. Rust, I, I get exactly what you said. My question is, I was looking at the RENA chart, probably about a month ago, actually, and so I don't have it in front of me. But I remember what was troubling is that when you look at the percentages, like we're, ours is like nineteen hundred and twenty-six, you know, units that were being asked for in this cycle. But there was other cities that weren't being asked. So if you look at the population of Galt and how many were being asked to add versus several other cities, and they were cities like Ranch Padova, for example, or I forget some other ones, they were actually much lower. What I mean by, is Galt was being asked to grow by a higher percentage than other cities. How is that fair? Is it just, we just got unlucky? Or, I mean, how?
Mr. Mayor, that was a process that was gone through a number of years ago, when CCOG originally did the distributions. So when we came into this, we had that number pretty much established. There's a whole methodology for how they go about that. Some of it's based on the COG figuring out how to equitably distribute new units in the area. Some of it's looking at the amount of vacant land that's within some areas. So it's a fairly complicated methodology that they use to do it. And all the jurisdictions in the CCOG region had an opportunity to challenge that distribution. Although typically, those challenges don't pan out for much change.
So my last question real quick, and then I'm going to go on, I apologize because I had a lot of questions I didn't want to ask them off the end, was regarding like the AB six eighty-six, which you guys did touch on. And I thank you for that, was about the, you know, it talks about the efforts to overcome patterns of segregation. So what I read this as is that basically, you know, trying to be more diverse in how we implement new developments, like, you know, make sure we put maybe a lower-income housing area amongst maybe a higher, and vice versa. I just, my see that, it's like, isn't that really just like a matter of socioeconomics, though? Like, how can you force, like, a certain area, I mean, you build a certain type of product, you're going to get a certain type of income level. And then when you try to mix that up and say, like, for example, we have Parlin Oaks, which is, I feel is a great project and it's very much a need in our city. But every, I've had probably a dozen people come to me in the last week and ask me, what's going on the corner of Krillian and Walnut? When I explain, the first thing, you know, when I mentioned the word apartments, is they start cringing. I mean, people just associate, you know, that with a low income, and nobody wants that, like, we don't want that in our backyard. I mean, you know, that's what everybody, nobody wants that near us. So for us to be able to do that and mix those things against the will of people, I mean, people kind of move into a certain neighborhood because they want to be like other, I mean, sadly, you know, and then you, so you tend to organically get lower-income people living here and higher-income people in there. So now, how are we supposed to really make that happen? I mean, it doesn't seem like it's natural. I don't know.
As we go through the, oh, Rick, maybe I'll start off. And this map does show that we have provided a distribution through the community to provide, you know, whether it be lower, well, and when we said lower moderate and above moderate, it identifies to affordability. But really, what we're doing, we're identifying properties that are either a low-density project, a medium-density project, or a higher-density project. Affordability, that comes with potentially the type of housing. Somebody would say, a rental apartment has a higher level of affordability than maybe a, an eight thousand square foot lot that's going to have a bigger house on it. Again, we're providing the opportunity, but I don't think at this point in time we're necessarily forced by the state to say, oh, this site, it's a high-density site. It has to be low-income housing. It has to be high-density housing, and there's an affordability to that. And I think that's where the city maintains some of its independence. We aren't directed by the state in regard to that level of affordability. There's such a nuance there, and it gets a, it's a tough discussion. I don't know, Rick.
Well, I think you're, again, I think Galt is in a good position for this. If you look at those maps that Amy had shown earlier on the areas that were, had impediments, a lot of those were in the southwest side. But if you then look at somewhere, we have the oranges on this map, they're mostly on that other side of the highway. But now, if you look at the sites that we're proposing, most of those sites are not in those areas of impediment. So you're already through this housing element, providing locations that are not subject to being impeded upon. But I fully understand your comment, and that's property in a free market is valued based on its attractiveness. And so less attractive properties are going to be typically used for low-income housing because property cost is part of the development cost. That said, I think for your community, what is laid out here shows good geographic distribution. It also shows that you've got quite a bit of potential housing going into areas that would not be considered to be impeded upon. So this would be very acceptable from HCD's standpoint.
Okay, I'm going to go on to let me other council members weigh in on this. We'll start with Vice Mayor. I can't see everybody, if somebody could, there you go, thank you. Vice Mayor, do you have any input on questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you, Mr. Hoffman, Amy Yang, and Rick Rust. You know, this is a big agenda item. I know Mr. Hoffman might be working since he get the new job. This is a big agenda item, has a lot of state mandate thing. I actually, I do understand, you know, when the state something mandate, one way or the other, we have to comply sooner or later. I have a few just clarification. First thing, I just want to make sure, this is the meeting tonight, we're not approving anything. We're just giving the direction to the staff to this element, so they can talk to HCD. And then they make some kind of agreement, come back to the council, and then that time we can have a public hearing.
That is correct.
Yeah, and then we can make a decision, whatever can be defined. So we have another opportunity if something in this element document we don't like, or most likely can, you know, my opinion can be, I depend on my constituency, my citizen. Whatever they looking at there, then we will look up that time.
Oh, sorry, I was going to offer, this is a draft document, we're sending it to HCD. We believe we've completed a document that complies with all the state mandates. And they're going to take a look at it, and they're going to provide us comments. If you're asking us down the road, can we remove something out of this document that's a state mandate? We cannot do that. But if there's maybe something that you look at and say, you know, can we come up with a different policy? Or is there a different way to, to meet that requirement? We can have that discussion with HCD. But as far as wholesale changes to state-mandated items, we're not allowed to take those out. We think we're putting policies in place that we can meet, that we could provide that information, so that we're providing opportunities. And ultimately, that'll allow us to maintain that independence from having the state come down and tell us, you know, you have to do this.
Yeah, I think, so that's me, the document we going to talk to, we are going to forward this evening. And then you guys can talk to the HCD, whatever, that document you telling me we cannot change it at all. Even the public, when you have a public hearing, and maybe there's some of the public here, the comment will come back. And I do understand all the, all, everything included in this. But this is you telling me, Mr. K, it's a hundred percent, that's, we can't change anything at all? I just want to be clarification.
I wouldn't say it's a hundred percent, but if down the road, you come back and say, well, there's a state-mandated program, I don't want to do it. Then the state's going to say, well, no, that doesn't comply with the housing element law. If you say, hey, this is a state mandate, is there a different way to meet this policy through a different program? I think at that point in time, we could have that type of discussion with HCD.
Right, but I'm talking about, I still want to keep my option open. When you have a public hearing, I believe the public hearing means what the public said, we're going to make the decision. That's what I will make, I don't know about the other council member, what they thinking. But I'm a hundred percent, I can make the decision at that time. Because at this time, I don't have the feedback that much from the public. So I do understand, you know, this is, this is a lot of mandate, we cannot do it, we cannot do it. You know, the state mandated, one way or the other, that's why I said in the beginning, we have to follow that. You know, the state mandated, one way or the other, that's why I said in the beginning, we have to uh follow that.
I think Craig, what the Vice Mayor is getting at, which, just to clarify, is if we're just accepting this presentation tonight, is this is what we're we're accepting, this is what we're giving to HCD to look it over and give us their thoughts. This is gonna come back to the, this is gonna go to public input, public hearing, this is gonna come back for our approval. What the Vice Mayor is wanting to know is if if we're we're not accepting if we push this forward tonight to HCD, you're saying, what I'm echoing from you is that regardless of public input, it's like we're just going through the motions. It doesn't matter what the public think, it doesn't matter about anybody, it doesn't even matter because once we give it to HCD, you know, this document's pretty much the way it needs to be when it comes back to us. That's what I'm hearing from you, Craig, and that's what the Vice Mayor is inquiring about.
Okay, well, let let me take a step back and and the public has been involved, and I don't want anyone to sit back and think that over the last five months that we haven't had a public process. I wanna discuss that a little bit. To date, the city has held public workshops on December sixteenth, twenty twenty, for the housing element kickoff. March sixteenth to review the Rena sites, and then again tonight. The Planning Commission has held public study sessions on January fourteenth uh, twenty twenty one for the housing element requirements, legislative guidelines, public schedule, public outreach. February first of this year for discussion on constraints to public or to providing housing. Uh, March eleventh to discuss the Rena sites inventory. And again, on April twenty second, uh, the Planning Commission reviewed the document and recommended uh, that it be submitted to the state to you. The housing element update has been noticed in the Galt Herald newspaper. There have been four newspaper articles written on the housing element update process. And the city manager biweekly update is also included. Four updates on uh upcoming public meetings. Uh, to date, there are eleven people signed up to receive the housing element update emails. And the Planning Division also has a website that is dedicated to the upside, um, the update. Uh, staff has attempted to make this process very transparent and very open to public participation. I don't want the council to think for one second, just because what's taking place tonight, it's a draft document, and you aren't making an approval of the document. That for the last five months, this hasn't been a very open and public process.
I understand what you're saying, Greg, and I I I understand it was, but I wanna remind you that we've been in a public for a year. And I had, uh, you know, a gentleman come to me today, wanted to know when we're gonna go back to live meetings, because he hasn't attended a meeting or seen a meeting in a year, because he doesn't use the internet. He doesn't, he doesn't have access to these things. I know you had it in the newspaper a lot, but what I'm saying is that if we have public hearings coming up, why the public hearings? If we've, if you're, if you're, what you're saying is that we've done all the public outreach, and we've done a phenomenal job with public outreach, and I'm not saying that you haven't. That that's a lot of things you've done. But I again wanna remind you that we have we haven't had an opportunity for someone to come in a real live meeting and come in and be involved in this. They had to have either saw it on a website, or they had to watch the planning meeting on Zoom, or a council meeting on Zoom, or something like that. So this is an important thing we're doing, and it's an important step in moving forward. And I feel like although we think the public outreach has been phenomenal, I would, I would gather there's a, there's a big segment that that would, that would argue against that. And so I just, I'm only speaking on behalf of those people. And I'm not trying to be, Craig, you know, and I, you and I talk really good about explaining stuff, so don't take this, I'm just only concerned about that. I'm concerned about us making some some major things, you know, over the internet. And people are like, you know, like right now, people, those people are not even watching the meeting right now because the internet's down at their house. I mean, this is what I'm talking about right now. So anyways, I'm gonna let somebody else speak. I'm just venting on this because I'm frustrated with 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 the amount of, um, I I don't know. I echo the Vice Mayor. I I think if you're gonna, you know, we're gonna have these public hearings. What's the purpose of public hearings between now and June? Or or now, I would now in um, whenever the the final privilege, if it's really for nothing, what is the point? Are we just going through the motions? Is it just a box we're checking? I'm just being frank here.
I wouldn't say we're checking a a box in the future. There's, there's an adoption process that has to take place by state law. Yeah, we do have to have public hearings before the Planning Commission. We do have to have public hearings before the city council. But if I notice a project in the newspaper, and we distribute that in the way we need to. And I've done that up till this point. Your comment about somebody participating in the future, they haven't participated yet. I don't know what else you want me to do. I put it in the paper, we've done, we've done articles. You know, you can't force people to participate. We've tried to be very open and transparent, and there's still opportunities up ahead of us for that uh participation.
I I get it. You don't need to explain. I'm just, you know.
Mister, uh, Mister Hoffman, uh, I'm looking at the public already. You did excellent. That's not, I'm not telling you, you don't, you did an excellent job to public, but my thing just be just with clarification. When we said to the public, there is a public hearing. And there should be a public here, so how we can listen, I I'm talking about gonna listen, then we can make a fine, that's my point. I'm saying, I'm not telling you, you did an excellent job, and I see on the page number two on on the explanation on the report, you did a very good job. And I heard you, you, but but you know, my thing is, if we're gonna bring back to that project as a public hearing, we should be keep, okay, our final decision be that, even we can accept maybe hundred percent whatever their report is, but we cannot wave, we cannot tell the public, no, this can be the tonight can be the season if we are not making a decision. That's the point I'm sending you.
Right, yeah, I understand, I understand.
Sorry, I'll let you finish, my bad.
Yeah, then, uh, I'm I'm looking at the report. Uh, the next, my coach, on the sixth goal, right, we have a sixth goal. As you know, on the number two, on the staff report, the goal number five, take action to overcome pattern of segregation, address disparity in housing need. Can you little bit, somebody, we explain a little bit more, explore what that mean?
Sure, I think. Sure, and I'll turn this over to to Rick and Amy, but part of that was making sure that as we were identifying sites for the the housing element, that they were dispersed throughout the community, that we weren't putting all the housing in any one place. And that everyone has the opportunity and access to infrastructure services. And that's by making sure that we dispersed these these sites throughout the community, and I turn it over to Amy and Rick, maybe for further clarification.
Yeah, I I just add um really quickly to what Craig said, um, is that it's also about the provision of services. Um, like you have a really great uh organization working in your community, South County Services, they already provide a lot of, for example, they provide a program called tenant eviction protection or something, um, forget the exact name of it, but basically if someone is about to be evicted, they'll help pay rent for a couple of months, and that keeps that family in place. So like supporting organizations like that, making sure those services continue in the city, not necessarily provided by the city itself, but making sure that organizations in the city are able to continue their their work. Uh, so I'll just add that, and I don't know, Frank, is there anything else you wanted to add to that?
Just, uh, yeah, it's looking at the, the policies, you're looking at ways to provide protections for people being thrown out on the street, basically. And they've had that come up during the COVID crisis. Um, and a lot of these policies talk about working with the local fair housing advocates, working with state and federal divisions and groups, and also trying to obtain funding to support the local population. Um, where you can get grants and such. In fact, one of the key reasons you wanna comply with your housing requirement is because then you're capable of getting leap and reap grants from the state, which can provide hundreds of thousands of dollars towards housing programs. And that's one of the main reasons you wanna have a certified housing element, because without that, you're kicked out right away.
Thank you. Then my next just clarification on the report, uh, page number three, R H N A overview. Uh, they mentioned there's your five kind of income categories. And I look on on this on table one. Uh, you know, they said extreme low, I think on the table one, it does not, uh, uh, that category does not show, uh, can you might be somebody explain why it's not?
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't give any of that category to Galt. I think they they take that income category and provide it to more urban uses because you're more likely to get those type of densities.
So extremely, extremely low me, me, what what that means, I even we don't get that category.
It's even. Vice Mayor, uh, extremely low income means that you, your household makes thirty percent or less of the area's median income. For most jurisdictions, this is assumed to be a fifty fifty split of the very low income category. That is, if we look at your six cycle requiring four hundred and four very low income housing units, the assumption normally is that about two hundred and two of those will be extremely low, and two hundred and two of them will be very low. Now, I will note that extremely low housing is not something that the market can address. So this has to be coming through some kind of a subsidy or some kind of a support program to provide that kind of housing. Normally.
Uh, thank you. Uh, right now, we doing, uh, Mr. K, we doing the cycle six, right?
Correct.
Okay, all the site, cycle six, we need very low four hundred uh, four unit and low is two hundred forty three, so total R H N A requiring a nineteen hundred twenty six unit, right?
Correct.
And I'm looking that that preliminary site summary. And we already have a plan, even we don't come with the new one, we already have planned twenty nine fifty seven. Almost one thousand more unit than whatever R H N A uh were asking us, right?
Right, correct.
And then, uh, on this plan, we are going to make thirty four hundred sixty is not something, um, but we are doing too much or what? And and if we do too much, what why the reason we are playing too many houses at this time?
I think that's just the amount of projects that we have. I mean, a number of these sites are large sites when you take a look at the Liberty Ranch Eastview project, that's, that was a major specific plan that was approved back in two thousand sixteen, and it was that was a big site that helped us through this Rena number. We do have a lot of approved projects. And they are helping us meet our Rena numbers. Typically, you do have your Rena number, and now with the new state law, we do have to provide more sites than what is the minimum requirement, because if something didn't develop and we didn't get those units, you'd have to stop all development and then go rezone a site. So providing more than what the bare minimum, that's important. And again, as Rick had indicated before, it's it's pretty typical that you're identifying somewhere between fifteen and thirty percent over the number. It just so happened, Galt was very lucky. Those sites were already identified through existing proposed uh projects. And we only had to do a new site of nine point nine acres, so the community was very lucky in that regard.
So this, uh, the other thing, the weekend, that's the one hundred ninety eight, that's for the, I think, nine point nine acre, right, you talking about?
Correct, that that's the project site that's the star, it's below Simmerhorn and above Bosso. That's the new site that we're gonna be identifying for, uh, the lower um category, it'd be the high density site. That's the one site that we're looking to rezone.
Okay, and then now we can start for annexation, which one, this is two hundred forty one?
Two hundred forty one is part of the Simmerhorn Ranch project. That was the I Corps project, so they did have a a medium density project, and that's part of the annexation that's gonna be taking place that we're doing right now for the notch area. And if I was to bring it up on a map, do you wanna see the map? If I was to show you this map, it's site twenty two, and that's currently in that notch area. It's, it's a, it's this site, and that's part of the Simmerhorn Ranch project that Elliot's gonna be building. And then this is our site that we're rezoning that star.
So that's, that's a nine point nine acre, they are high with much, right?
Correct, correct.
High with much to, this can be a R four or R three?
R four.
Okay. All right, my next is ADU, uh, the sixty four, where these are, are they already planned, or we just?
So state law allows for people to build an accessory dwelling unit, and we haven't had a lot here in Galt. They're starting to be much more popular, and with our large lot sizes here in town, uh, we have big backyards. People are, do have the ability to build an accessory dwelling unit um, in this community, and the state thought that this was a great community. We have big lots. And so the ability to use uh some of our accessory dwelling units in the future and sixty four units, that was ten percent of our units in the the low and very low designation. And even though we haven't had a lot, the thought was in eight years, we could probably build about eighty here. And that helps us meet our our low and very low. So that was a, Dan Gerling thought of that. It was, it was a great idea to ask HCD if we could use that. It was, that was clever. And that's something that the state said, yeah, we could use. So that was a good thing.
So 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 that's me, if somebody have a bigger lot, he can go back and file, ask a permit, and what kind of requirement can be? How big and what kind of setback? Are we done here in town yet, or we going to do?
They would have to meet the 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 lot coverage and setbacks. It would be a bigger lot. It's, you know, a ten foot rear yard setback, five feet on the sides, making sure the lot coverage doesn't go over fifty percent. Typically, you'd see, you know, maybe a a unit somewhere anywhere from like four hundred and fifty, up to like eight hundred and fifty square feet.
Okay, then, thank, thank you, thank you. You know, let me, uh, Mr. Mayor, let move the next person. I will come back. I have some more question.
Sure, we'll come back around. Um, Councilmember Papinow. Councilmember Papinow, do you have? There you go.
All right, I had a little little interruption. First thing, uh, thank you to Director Hoffman for taking my questions in preparation for the meeting. It's mostly confirmed uh that by and large, these laws uh are drafted and passed uh for places like LA and the the Bay Area, and a lot of it doesn't apply to us. And thank you to Mr. Rust and Ms. Yang for windowing it down to the things that actually are a a concern for our uh our development here. The one question that I had kinda deals with the the segregation idea and um the areas that have a lower economic or educational opportunity. We've talked before, um, and and actually approved at least one project under the idea that we're placing uh more density closer to the city center, if you will, uh, to provide walkability, easier transit for those. But when I look at the colors on the map, it would appear that we're, we're placing the higher densities squarely into the places that are our lowest uh education and economic outcomes. And then to take that a step further, as we move forward, talking about the market master plan, um, we talked about, uh, you know, putting in uh, much needed and and much requested more dense housing so that uh, it's more affordable, and we can have kind of that housing lifecycle that we've talked about. So it seems a little bit counterintuitive that good planning puts our dense, densest housing into those areas. And so, correct me if I'm wrong on that, or or clarify it, and then And then, um, so my question would be, as we go forward, especially considering the, the market plan, uh, is it a case where we also need to at the same time work on additional services? That's going to, you know, somehow correct those, uh, economic and educational uh, opportunity zones? And that's for whoever wants to answer it.
I can take a first crack at that, um, so yeah, I think you do bring up a good point. I think there's a balance between, um, finding sites that are ready to go, um, and finding sites that have access to good services. And then the other half of that is, um, you know, it, that's where the policies and programs kick in and providing the services and infrastructure to areas that might need a little extra support. Um, and so that's kind of where a lot of our policies are coming in. Um, so we, we did the bare minimum, uh, but there are additional policies that, you know, we've got in our back pocket that we've used in other places. If this is something that, um, that the council is concerned about, we can certainly add additional policies that would make a stronger statement in terms of making sure that there are services in place in these areas that currently do not have as much, um, as the rest of the areas. Um, but, but yeah, you, you bring up a really good point, and there is definitely sometimes a disconnect in terms of where housing goes and where services are.
As you look at some of the maps, you'll find that on one map, the area is green, on another map, that area is orange. And, um, you know, all these things kind of have to add up in some ways. You've also got the fact that some of the new housing that's being proposed as part of newer developments, that'd be what we call greenfield developments. They're out in current ag land. And so a lot of these areas don't have all the services established yet. And so our low income project is part of a larger specific plan project, and that specific plan is bringing with it parks and schools, uh, roads and infrastructure. And so all, as all that stuff gets built in, some of that disparity for educational access will go away as that new school comes online. So it's not a static problem in some of these areas, it's gonna be something that will help to resolve itself over time.
All right, I appreciate that, and that, that's kind of, you know, my, my concern is, uh, you know, with specifically the, the market plan. And if we're putting the denser housing in, in close and accessible to services, um, you know, that, that we do have ways and, you know, we, if that goes forward, we, you know, end up rezoning some areas and it kind of throws a, a little bit of this, um, into a state of flux, I would imagine.
And so far, the only place we're rezoning is that one nine point nine acre piece, the rest of it is going per plan, if you will.
Right, no, and that's, that's what I was talking about is, if, you know, if, if in two or three years, we do make somewhat of a major investment in denser, more affordable housing, uh, right toward the city center, um, would that, you know, then be considered in our seventh cycle? Or would that affect this one?
It depends on when it gets built, um, which cycle it falls into relates to when the building permit is pulled for that, uh, housing unit. So if you were, say, the, some of the market housing comes in at low income and it comes in before the eight years is over, you would count that against your sixth cycle, and then you could actually take things off of your Rena list because you're media through another project. So as the world changes, it's not a one-way street. Um, you can take some stuff off, you, it perhaps the nine point nine acres never gets rezoned, um, because you don't need it. So that it can work that way too, you can adjust your Rena list as you go through this process.
Very good, so we do have the flexibility. Thank you, that was my only question.
All right, Councilman Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, I'm curious, what is the consequences if we do not get approval from the HCD?
You wanna start, Rick, or I can start? So.
Well, you could, you could summarize, I get it, but summarize.
If we don't have a certified element, the state starts withholding monies. Whether they be grant monies, they could be transportation dollars. It's, the state has gotten very heavy-handed over the last several years. Um, you know, no one used to submit a, an annual housing element update report until about four years ago, and then the state said, if you don't do it, we're not gonna give you any transportation dollars. So all of a sudden, now everyone submits their reports, and that's the downside of not having a certified housing element. You start not getting any state monies.
You also mentioned that they could take over, uh, control of our decision-making, uh, land, correct?
Well, if you don't have a certified element, and you get a project comes in, somebody wants to do an affordable housing project, and you don't have the policies in place, the, the state could say, oh, the city doesn't want it, we don't care. You're doing the project, so there's overrides that could take place at the state level. That's why it's very important, we have a certified element. I think what we have before us, and I have to implement this, and so I've looked at it. And I feel comfortable that we can meet these policies, we can meet these goals, and we can meet these implementation measures. We can get all the programs in place, we can provide the opportunities, and we can still meet, be an independent community and make decisions that are the best for this community.
Sure, and I get it, we're, we're setting a framework, we're not requiring anybody to build either, I get that. Could we go to, could we go to figure seven point five? And I'd like to discuss, I think it's twenty-one figure, though the, yeah, in the center there, next, just above the star is twenty-one. What homes are those?
Correct, that's it, that is a mixed-use site that is coming in with the notch annexation. And it's a sixteen-acre site, and what we proposed is that up to like twenty-five percent could potentially be multifamily, so there's the potential for four acres.
Okay, that has no zoning or, uh, no maps drawn yet?
No maps at this point in time, it's part of the notch annexations. I expect that that property will be into the city along with the rest of the notch by like August, September of this year. But we do not have a project there.
Twenty-two is, is halfway down the road, correct?
Correct, and that's the, that's the Cimberhorn Ranch project that Elliot did, that was the I Corps project.
Do you remember what those are starting at?
No, not at this point in time.
So I, I say all this to lead up to the following. You know, uh, the state charges tens of thousands, a hundred thousand dollars for fees against builders. And then they want us to correct all the issues to build in a manner they see fit, and they use our tax dollars to blackmail us into growing the city the way they see fit. Has anyone ever pushed back on them to drop the fees to actually make it easier to build affordable housing? That's not at you, Craig, that's just anybody that wants that. I just wanted to say, because, you know, everybody, you know, they talk about affordable housing and the project we just mentioned, there's, they're on the lower end, but they're still starting at four hundred thousand. And I personally don't see that as affordable in, affordable housing. That's, you know, if you do the math and you try to make that house payment, it's a lot cheaper to rent, and that's, that's the real problem. The city, the state could help a lot if they would not attach so much to it. That's all I really have, thank you for the other council members, those are great questions, by the way, thank you.
All right, I was waiting to see if someone wanted to tackle that, but we'll move on. Um, Councilman Lozano, thank you for being patient most time.
Yeah, I, I, I will be very brief, um, unlike normally, I think. But, um, I, I just wanna reiterate, cuz I think it's important that, um, and I said this in the workshop that we had regarding the housing element. You know, this, the, the state administration, the, the governor's office has, since he's been in office, has really pushed housing as into the forefront, that's where this is coming from. Um, i- 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 it, it's not a secret. And so, uh, but I think, uh, Councilmember Vandenberg hit the nail on the head when they, when he says, you know, we talk about grant money, right? And, oh, well, you know, some in the community would say, oh, well, there's always strings attached to grant money. Well, what we forget is that grant money is our tax money that we're already paying. And so, um, you know, I understand, they, you know, evaluating the, the quote-unquote strings that are attached to, to grant money. But, but I don't want to forego grant money, uh, because, um, you know, just, just because. But on the other hand, you know, it's, it's, it is really the state blackmailing, uh, local jurisdictions. And so, um, you know, I, I've said it a million times before, and I'll say it one more, is that, uh, you know, there's always these unfunded, uh, mandates from the state, and, and they continue to come, um, whether it be through transportation, housing, um, you know, whatever it is. Uh, I, I think that the one, the one statement I'll make with, related to the housing prices, um, I think we're in kind of unprecedented times, uh, in terms of the housing. I- i- and so I don't think we'll see the, the, the prices that we see right now into the future. Um, just the price of lumber and, and raw materials right now is just through the roof. And so at some point, that's gonna level out through, either through a, you know, through inflation, and I, I'm not an economist, I'm just a, a government worker. But I, I would seem to think that, uh, at some point, it's gonna level out. And, and, uh, what I'm more looking for is not necessarily low-income housing. Although, uh, I would consider, uh, my twenty-four-year-old daughter more low-income than I am. And, uh, but she has no place to buy here in Galt, uh, and quite honestly, uh, renting is not much cheaper. Uh, oftentimes in, in cities, it's gonna be, you know, twenty-four hundred dollars for a three-bedroom apartment. So, um, anyhow, so I, I would just say this, thank you, Craig, uh, or Mr. Hoffman, for the public outreach that you've done. Um, i- i- it, it has been immense, and that was one of the questions I was gonna ask, and I thank you for covering that. Um, a- again, thank you to Rick and, and Amy for what you've done on this plan. And, uh, I feel, uh, I, I'll tell you, as a state called a board member, I was a little, I was really nervous last year when, when they were talking about the Rena numbers, and I looked at our numbers, and, and I know Mr. Hoffman was a little nervous initially. Uh, but we did a good job, and I think our planning commission, uh, really looked at this, uh, and, and like you said, Mr. Gerling, one of our commissioners, came up with a great idea, and, and so I think that, uh, I, I would support moving this forward to HCD. Um, you know, unfortunately, we have to, uh, to some degree, uh, I think we need to abide by the law. And the way we change the laws, we change the people that make the laws. And so, um, you know, th- those are just my thoughts. I think all, uh, my colleagues that have, uh, have asked the, the pertinent questions. And, and thank you, Mr. Hoffman, for your time, uh, earlier, uh, regarding this, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Lozano. Um, just two last quick specific questions. Um, can you just, someone quickly explain how our draft or what in our draft is gonna help us be compliant with the AB one thirty-nine, which is about the homeless? Uh, can you kind of just quickly explain what that is exactly? Because it kind of frames it as that we have to evaluate, um, what our needs are. And I, I just wanna know, what is that piece of legislation, and how is it in our draft, and what does that mean to Galt? Can you talk, tell me about that?
Changes for one thirty-nine include modifying your, um, zoning code to allow that transitional housing, um, that I talked about in my presentation, that need to be allowed. Talks about what zones this type of housing is allowed in within the community. Sort of like you have to have spots that it can be built within the community, and what kind of zones that does occur in. So those are the big changes, there's some minor tweaks to things like parking ratios that have be done to comply with state law as far as you can only require parking for employees, you can't require parking for the residents therein. It's typically, they don't have cars, so that's, that was just adjustment. Some places, we're keeping these shelters out by saying every bed or every room had to have parking spaces. And so you ended up with a facility that was much more expensive in order to park cars that never existed. So those are some of the minor tweaks, um, that are being made to support that type of thing.
So Craig, do we have sites? He mentions having sites earmarked for such a thing for transitional housing he's described. Where on our map are those spots? Or they just fall under the high density?
They can, it, it's an update to our, our development code. I mean, cities handle it differently. I know a care facility can be identified as a, as transitional housing for individuals. I've seen, um, care homes just in residential, uh, neighborhoods. But I think you have to identify what is the, the transitional housing for. You have to be careful with it, and it's just something, we've got a lot of work ahead of us over the next three years. We're gonna be, uh, taking a look at our development code, we've got a lot to update. And it's funny, we do have a lot of grant money to make those updates.
But if we're, but if we're approving a draft tonight that we're, you know, so to speak, not really gonna alter it because you feel like it's the best suited, and we've already went around the discussion, then, then how would we be? I just trying, what I'm trying to bore into here is, what would be some of the sites that we have earmarked that? I mean, the, the public are gonna, this, I can see people's eyebrows pricking up when that was commented, like the transitional housing regarding homeless. I can imagine people's thoughts right now, uh, that are watching this. I, I, I'm just concerned with, what does that mean for us? Uh, is that, are you telling me the city of Galt is be, gonna be forced under these types of legislation? Like, you know, AB one thirty-nine to, to, to provide for that? Or, or are we just supposed to set aside? Um, can you give me a little more explanation on that?
I think what we're gonna ultimately have to do is take a look at our zoning code and update that and identify where transitional housing can go. What is the zoning designation that is most appropriate for the community? I think at this point in time, this element, it's providing the bones in, in the overall structure. But getting into the details, that's gonna be the follow-through with our development code update to, to make, to implement this element. So I don't have a, an answer for you now, because I, I don't know, in going through the development code, when we update that, where we, where we're gonna put transitional housing. What is the appropriate zoning designation to put it in?
Okay, and my last question is for Rick specifically, and this is more of a big thing, and maybe it's not really a question you can answer, but it's, it's up to him to pose the question. But it seems strange that, like, Councilmember Lozano said, that at this point in time, we have the, the state or the, you know, Sacramento or whatever, uh, you know, basically forcing, um, housing, and this is a big push to provide more housing when, in the first time in I don't know how many decades, the population of California has actually decreased. Seems a little backwards to me, I don't know. Any thought on that?
Well, the, the de- decrease has been fairly recent. Now, how the state will react to that, I don't know. Our Rena numbers were developed several years ago, so before that decrease started to show up, um, the demographic impacts of that, and who's actually leaving is probably still up for debate. There's some commentary that it's more the higher-end incomes that are leaving, and so the problem hasn't really moved out of state. Um, it may be a higher percentage of the state long-term.
Thank you, does any, so does any other council member, um, I'll, if you want, just raise your hand up, I'll let you go if you wanna.
Only one question, last question now. Mr. Ray, could you explain to Senate Bill ten thirty-five, how it can affect on, uh, the affordable housing?
On ten thirty-five is what you're asking about?
Yes.
Talks about the update of a housing, your safety element?
Yes.
That'll be something that still needs to be accomplished, um, by the city. Typically, that can be done often by incorporating the county's multi-hazard, um, mitigation plan. And using the findings of that plan as being part of your new safety element, so you can incorporate that. So it doesn't necessarily mean that you have a lot of changes. Most of the changes in the safety element law that the state cares about would be if you were in an area of wildfire hazard or flood, um, but specifically wildfire. So given that Galt is not really prone to any wildfire hazard, um, there's not a whole lot of changes that need to be made in your safety element. Uh, you don't have any airports, you don't really have a flood zone that's in residential areas, you don't have wildfire hazards. So I imagine we can take, you know, your current safety element could be minorly tweaked, make reference to the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan for the county, and call it good.
Thank you, and then one more, uh, question, you know, I did watch the, uh, planning mission meeting, and the commissioner, I, I know you've explained just earlier about the shell. So you telling to the council, we cannot change anything, is it? I, I, another word is, is a good word to change shell with another word.
You're. You look back through all the shells, and for some of them, where you might want a little wiggle room, they say things like, you shall encourage, you shall. you look back through all the shells and for some of them where you might want a little wiggle room, they say things like you shall encourage, you shall promote. So they don't really hold you to a specific line of action. The shells that look at, they say you shall do something like you shall change your zoning code. Those are very specific and those are meant to be very specific in order to comply with law. So we think that what you have right now is, is appropriate. And after all, if you're going through all the effort to produce a housing element, this is supposed to be your policy and represents what you plan to do.
Thank you. Again, thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Thank you, Mr. Rick. Rust and Emmy Haggis, you could spend a lot of time on this report and I'm going to sport tonight, but I still want to keep my option open. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Papinow, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I've got my question answered. I just wanted to, uh, comment on, uh, to, uh, Craig, Amy and Rick, all of you. Um, that, uh, I, I am very impressed with the plan. Um, it can be negative thinking about the what ifs in the future. But, um, no, my compliments for coming up with the plan that keeps us, uh, in compliance and with very, very minimal changes to, what we were already doing anyway. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lozano, do you have something to add further?
No, I have nothing to add. I would just like to hear if there are any public comments on this.
Absolutely. We will do that. Do we have any written public comment? Tina?
And no written public comment.
Rose, do we have any hands raised online?
We have nobody online with their hands raised.
Okay. Yeah, just before I move for motion on this, just wanted to let Craig know. My comments, uh, were not directed, uh, in, in negatively towards Mr. Hoffman or Mr. Rest or, uh, Miss Yang. Basically just venting my frustrations at, at overall, you know, state legislators and things. Um, I know it's like the don't shoot the messenger kind of concept. So, um, hopefully, you know, you took offense to my questions and my frustrations and they were targeted at you. So thank you for your work. Craig, go ahead.
I'd just add, I understand the frustrations. I mean, trying to provide a public process and making it meaningful. And I think the council made it very clear in, in December, you wanted an open and transparent, process. And I think even then we start saying, are we going to be able to reach out and touch the people that, that can't participate by a computer? Or, you know, don't have Zoom, uh, potential. I think we've tried to reach out as much as we can, but, it's not the process that if we had our chance to do it, it's not how we would do it. And so there's, there's been a lot of frustrations and, and I get it. It's frustrating. A- as much frustrations as this council has, as staff trying to work through this process, it hasn't been easy. We've just tried to do the best we can and reach out the best we can and say that, this journey isn't done. There's opportunities to still participate. If anyone's watching and they have questions, please reach out to staff.
All right. Thank you for that. I appreciate that last, that last bit you just said. So with that, um, I will entertain a motion if nobody has any further comment. Um, to, uh, basically review and accept the, we, be an accept by motion draft twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine housing element document and direct staff to submit the document, to the Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, to start the state sixty review and comment period. The city council is not adopting or approving the draft, housing element document at this time. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Papinow. You have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papinow.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Russ. Thank you, Ms. Yang.
Thank you very much.
All right. We will now be moving on to our next item. Item H, a regular calendar. For those of you that may did not see the beginning, we have moved the Crowley Boulevard to June fifteenth, uh, council meeting. Item H, regular calendar, treasurer's office, city of Galt, investment policy for fiscal years twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Mr. Farrell.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I, uh, really did not mean to rile you up again, but I was going to talk about, uh, home prices and unemployment levels and, and median incomes and interest rates. So, uh, I'll just run through that real quick, uh, before we get to the investment policy. For in February twenty twenty-one, uh, here in Galt, there were thirty homes that were sold. The median price of the homes were four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Now that's an increase of five point three percent from, from last year, twenty twenty. And last year it was three hundred and ninety-five thousand. Now to give you some perspective on this, um, countywide during February twenty twenty-one, the median price was, uh, four hundred and forty thousand, which was, uh, an increase of fourteen percent from the prior year. Now, our neighbors, both north and south, Elk Grove, their median price in February was five hundred and twenty-five thousand. Lodi, they had ninety-four homes sold and their median price was four hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars. So that, uh, just kind of gives you a little bit of perspective. Now, the, income levels for, while you were talking, I quickly looked this up because this, this issue came up. Uh, what is the median income of the people here in, here in, uh, the city of Galt? And the last statistic that is out there is from two thousand and nineteen. So please take that into consideration. The individual median income from two thousand and nineteen here was thirty-two thousand, fifty dollars. The household median income was seventy-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Okay, so currently, in, uh, I want to touch on the unemployment rate here in Galt. So this is, uh, up-to-date information comes from EDD in March, twenty twenty-one. So just what, uh, a little over a month ago, unemployment rate here in Galt was ten point four percent. Countywide, it was seven point four percent. The, there were only two areas in the entire county that was actually higher than Galt. One was Walnut Grove, um, which is at ten point eight, and then the Florin area, which was at twelve point nine. Um, now with that, I'll, I'll switch over to interest rates, which I like talking about anyway. We all know the interest rates are low and, and just to kind of give you some perspective, a treasury, a three-note treasury that you can buy is, ready for this, zero point zero one percent. So one basis point. Um, six-month, uh, zero point zero three percent. So three basis points. One year treasury is zero point zero five. It doesn't start to increase until you about hit the three-year mark. And the five-year treasury is at zero point eight two percent. So slightly over three-quarters of a percent for investment of five years. Now, I've said all that for a reason. I'll come back to interest rates in just a little bit, but I do want to say and talk about the investment policy. The city council has the responsibility to invest idle cash. And, and every year, again, according to, according to section fifty-three, six oh seven, the city council can designate the city treasurer on a yearly basis to, uh, provide that or delegate that authority to the city treasurer. And that's what the investment policy, uh, one of the things that the investment policy does. So there, once, once that is established, you also, the investment policy also says, what, how you want the city treasurer to invest those funds. Of, of course, we all, we all agree, safety is the number one priority. Liquidity is the number two priority. And then we get as high, the, as high of a yield as possible. And on page, five of the proposed investment policy for the next fiscal year, you actually specify how or what instruments you want, or you want the city to invest in. So first is, uh, say government securities, uh, treasuries, like I just read off. And then also, um, quasi-government securities, uh, like Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, uh, Federal Home Loan Bank type securities. Um, local agency investment fund, invest with the state. You, you know, checking account, money markets, CDs, uh, commercial paper, um, corporate notes, if it makes sense. So that's what the investment policy does is it grants the authority to the treasurer to invest for another year. And also you, you're dictating as far as what the treasurer can and should invest in. And again, keeping to all government code, which no investment can be longer than five years. The question always comes up as far as what changes that I've made to the investment policy from last year. And the answer is none. Um, as far as the core of the investment policy, on page fourteen, of your policy, I did make one change there. And this page really does not and is not required to be in an investment policy. What I've stated here, just in the, in the, just trying to be or have full disclosure to the public. I use two, two brokers to purchase investments. One has always been, uh, Doug Robinson, Robinson Capital Management. And the other one was a gentleman named Robert Allen. Robert, when COVID hit, Robert, uh, decided to, I'll say semi-retire, and he has not returned yet. So I have designated on our policy to put in another person instead until Robert decides to come back. And that is Debbie Higgins of Higgins Capital Management. We, as the city, have to have a third-party custodian to hold all of our securities. That has not changed. That is still Zion's Bank up in, uh, Seattle. So I'll answer any questions that you have regarding the investment policy. Otherwise, I'll ask for your approval of this policy for the fiscal year that's coming up, which is twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Farrell, thank you for your presentation. Always very informative and I always love that you throw in stats that, um, in what's typically could be a boring discussion about money and be over some people's heads that you always, put some data in there that the average person can relate to and, um, and, and find interesting. I, I think it's funny that you, the Galt median price was almost the same as the Lodi in the median price. And I know you didn't give, the, uh, incomes from Lodi, but I know that the average income of Lodi probably is going to be higher than Galt. So it's, it's interesting that the median income compared to the median home price, I think is, um, going to be, they're more of a discrepancy, I guess, from in Galt and Lodi. But thank you for sharing that. It was interesting.
Sure.
So, um, does any of the council have any, any questions for Mr. Farrell?
Uh, Mr. Farrell, thank you for giving us a, uh, you know, detailed report. Uh, my question was, but you already answered it. There is no change from the previous, uh, report, right? Twenty twenty twenty-one, right?
There, there is no change in the investment, in the core investment policy from this current fiscal year to the proposed next fiscal year. Yes.
Thank you.
With the low interest rates as they are, there's not much you can do.
Um, does any other council member have a question for Mr. Farrell? Just pop your hand up or speak, you could speak if you do. Um, one last thing, you know, you mentioned that unemployment rate ten point four. I'm curious, I, I know I'm asking you like if you know the answer to that, but I'm just curious why it's so high. I mean, with Galt being a bedroom community, I would assume that, um, that, that doesn't necessarily mean that Galt businesses, um, that there's no opportunity for working Galt. I, I would assume that people that just live in Galt are just not at work somewhere else. I mean, I mean, I don't know. Do you have any input on that?
You know, I, I, I don't have an exact answer, but one, one that immediately comes to mind is, is it possible that a person could make more on unemployment than one that earning minimum wage? Then, then, uh, working at a minimum wage job? I think the answer is yes.
Oh, I'm a hundred percent with you. I've never seen more hiring. We're hiring signs. I see everybody's hiring. I hear about people can't find work. Ridiculous, but you have a ten point four unemployment rate. That just boggles the mind. Anyways, um, so without further ado, uh, if anybody has any comments, if not, I will entertain a motion to, accept the Galt investment policy as submitted by Mr. Farrell. I have a motion.
Can I just note, there's no public comment for the minutes?
Thank you, Tina. Thank you. Were any hands raised online, Rose?
No, there is not.
All right. Thank you for that. All right. I will entertain a motion.
Move.
To approve.
All right. Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu, seconded by Councilmember Papinow. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papinow.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Motion passes five zero. We'll now move on to item two, which is our treasurer's report for period ending March twenty twenty-one, also for Mr. Farrell. Please go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. So before you, you have the treasurer's report for March twenty twenty-one. And I want to just point out a few things here and then we'll, then we'll quickly move on. The state of California life funds and I've, that I've mentioned, their interest rate, as expected, is starting to decrease or drop. And it's, uh, as of the end of March, it was at thirty-six basis points or zero point three six percent. As that is lowering, I am now starting to look and, uh, to, to, I almost say strategically purchase some, uh, government securities. During, uh, the month of March, I did purchase one. That's a five-year security at one point oh seven percent. And there's, three years ago, I invested two and a half million dollars with our local bank, Farmers Emergence, uh, in, in a CD. Unfortunately, that CD is, is up. They're matures in eight days. We were getting for the last three years, two point three five percent. So now, I gotta do something with that two and a half million dollars. I'll go back to all the interest rates that I read off to you. The treasuries, uh, three-year is zero point three two percent. So that shows you that what a difference it was from, from three years ago to today. Um, so I have, you know, a few options. Uh, I have a six million dollars in a, in the money market account, if you notice. And that is because we're earning forty basis points, which is certainly higher than, a little bit higher than the life funds. So, yes, we, we always adhere to safety first, liquidity second, but then after that, we try to get as, as much yield as we possibly can. So, but when you have interest rates as low as they are, and they're going to be remain this way for quite some time, there's really not many good options. Um, and lastly, I'll just mention, um, that for the first three quarters ending in March, the city earned three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in interest. If you remember approximately last year at this time, I made an estimate of a little bit over four hundred thousand, probably about four fifteen or so. Um, we're going to come pretty darn close by the end of this fiscal year, which includes just one more quarter at, at lower rates. So, I'm looking, still looking, you know, there's always, always a few options here and there. Um, but with low rates as they are, and they're not going to change in the foreseeable future because the Fed is, has said that we're not going to. We're not going to change rates at all. Um, that's the treasurer's report for March, uh, twenty twenty-one.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Um, I was just thinking when you said about the interest rates being, staying low for a while, with the, with the shortage in housing in Galt, what I mean, shortage, but competitive market supply and demand, I think. And with rates staying low, like you're saying, it would, it would definitely look like, you know, the housing market is can, going to continue to possibly climb or stay strong. Uh, I think a silver lining here would be that as more houses change hands in Galt, at a higher price, then that obviously is a new, you know, resets the tax base, uh, which means more property tax for Galt. So, there's a silver line. Not that that's going to offset your investments, but.
Yeah, I mean that, yeah, absolutely. That's, that's true. Instead of, uh, a, a piece of property paying taxes on, on the original sale price of, say, fifteen years ago of three hundred thousand, now that same property is going for, say, six hundred thousand. And yeah, your tax base resets. And so, yeah, you, we will receive and see more in, in property tax at that point. But we can't, we can't rely on it. We need, we still need businesses to, uh, and we, and I can't emphasize enough to shop locally to all of our citizens. Shop locally is wherever and whenever you can.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you for that. Does any council members have any questions for Mr. Farrell or any comments on this subject? No? All right. Well, a good presentation as usual, and thank you for the hard work you're doing out there. I know it's tough. And, uh, but we, uh, I feel safe with our money in your hands, Sean, as it has been for a long, long time. So, well, hopefully we'll try to spend it wisely.
Thank you.
Motion to accept the treasurer's report as submitted. Actually, sorry, do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
All right. Rose, any hands raised online?
No hands raised.
Okay. Now I will, uh, entertain a motion to approve the report as submitted.
They'll move.
Moved by Councilmember Vandenberg, and I will second that motion. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Hi.
Councilmember Papinow.
Hi.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano.
Hi.
Mayor Farmer.
Hi. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Sean, and thank you for your patience waiting around all this time.
Thank you very much.
All right. Without further ado, we'll move on to our next item from the City Manager's Office, which will be our coronavirus COVID nineteen update from our City Manager, Mr. Hines. Sir, if you will.
Good evening, City Manager Lorenzo Hines, here to give the COVID update for May fourth, twenty twenty-one. Can everybody see the PowerPoint on the screen, please? All right, great. So this is what our case picture looks like, both at Sack County and within the, the area of Galt. So if you can see, you notice on the first line that the cases in Sack County have gone up two percent or eighteen hundred cases. The number of deaths in Sack County has gone up by nineteen or one percent. Here within our, the jurisdiction of Galt, our cases have gone up by thirty-five cases or one percent. And fortunately, we have not lost any Galt residents to this disease. So it looks like the pandemic in its own way is slowing down. Sacramento County remains in the red tier. We've got seven point five new COVID nineteen cases per day, per, per hundred thousand. We need to drop that down to six cases or less than six or less cases per day in order to move to the orange tier. We've got a two point eight percent positivity rate. That's actually down from three point five percent at our last council meeting. And by the way, the cases per day, the last time we met, was sitting at nine. And so things are getting easing up a bit with this pandemic. The greater Sacramento region ICU capacity is currently at twenty-eight point four. We were at twenty-nine point five back in April when we last met. On June fifteenth, California will fully open if two criterion are met. Vaccine supply is, is sufficient for Californians sixteen years and older who wish to be inoculated. And hospitalizations are, are stable and low, and specifically hospitalization amongst the vaccinated individuals are low. Recent vaccine events hosted by the city in partnership with Community Services District and South County Services. On April twenty-fourth, at the Tribola Center, we administered two hundred and twenty-five vaccines. Now, on April twenty-ninth, also at the Tribola Center, we administered another sixty-nine vaccines. Our mobile vaccination clinic was launched in an effort to reach the homebound seniors and unsheltered. And so we're estimated at this time to have provided fifty-nine vaccines. We have a walk-in vaccination event scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, May fifth, at the Galt Market from nine AM to one PM. Let me say that again. We have a walk-in vaccination event scheduled for tomorrow, May fifth, at the Galt Market, nine AM to one PM. We will have five hundred doses of Johnson and Johnson vaccine available. And this event is hosted by the partnership, our partnership with Community Services District, South County Services, and Sacramento County Department of Public Health. So we urge anyone looking to get inoculated to come on down to the Galt Market tomorrow, nine AM to one PM, and participate in the, the vaccination event. Sacramento County recently extended the Galt COVID nineteen tested site, testing site through June twenty twenty-one. Sixty percent of all eligible Californians have received at least one dose of the COVID nineteen vaccine. So that's good news. Sacramento County has administered a little over a million doses of the COVID nineteen vaccine, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand partial vaccines, four hundred and thirty-four thousand full vaccinations. And so in total, thirty-one point five percent of all, of eligible residents in the nine-five-six-three-two zip code have been partially inoculated. As we always mention, vaccinate Sacramento, the Vaccinate Sacramento webpage provides availability to the community for websites. Also, vaccinefinder.org identifies clinics, pharmacies, and other locations offering the vaccine. Myturn.ca.gov contains appointments for mass vaccination sites coordinated by the state at Cal Expo or at McCullin or at Stockton Arena. Individuals sixteen and older are now eligible to be vaccinated in California. And so that's the update for today. I will let the council know that we are having discussions internally about opening services here within the city. Pretty soon here, we're just trying to work out the details. I will alert county, I'm sorry, I will alert the council, and we will make sure to alert the public when we're ready to do that through our social media outlets. Mr. Mayor, thanks, and back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. One question, question, the criteria on the thirty-one point five-three percent of nine-five-six-three-two residents that have been vaccinated, what, what, where did that data come from? How did you acquire that data?
I believe that came from the county.
Okay. So that would be, I guess, through people, when they go get vaccinated, then you give them your address, zip code, and then it's documented that way. So that's how they compile that?
Yes.
No matter where they got it at, whether it was in Galt or at McCullin or through their.
Yeah, if you, if you show up at the vaccination site, they will ask you for information about your background, your location, because they are tracking the number of folks who are inoculated.
Okay. So you mentioned about having internal conversations. Do you have any sort of idea of a timeframe of that? Because that was going to be one of my questions for you, is where we're at with that.
We are working on those, having those conversations internally. And as far as the timeframe, I will let the council know when we're ready. So I don't want to build expectations. There are things we have to do and make sure that are in place. And there are things that we're ordering that are being shipped to us, and so we're dealing with some delays in that area. So I want to make sure we get everything in place before I tell you when we're going to do this, but our hope is to do it soon.
Would this also pertain to discussions about meetings as well?
No, we're not gonna, we're not gonna tackle that topic because it's a, it's a, it's a large gathering situation, and things are a little more complicated than having folks come in and get service at a counter. I'm just trying to take this one step at a time.
So does the county have, I mean, what's the county's put? I would just be curious of what the county's comment would be. You know, my daughter went and saw a movie tonight. I thought it was kind of interesting. My daughter can go see a movie, but we can't have a council meeting. I mean, does the county just not, I mean, I understand this is, you're only going by county guidelines. I get it. I'm just, it's, it just seems like their rules are just so inconsistent. It doesn't make sense.
Well, the one thing that I have to let the public know is that Galt is not an island unto itself. We have the county watching our behavior. We have the state watching our behavior. And in certain instances, we have the federal government watching our behavior. So everything that we do has to be measured and to ensure that we are within everyone's guidelines going up the line. And so we're careful about every step that we take. We've got a large federal stipend that is headed our way, and I don't want to do anything to jeopardize those dollars or to have anyone accuse us of not following the rules. Now, as far as the rules for other industries, other, like movies or entertainment, the rules are different. They, 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 they don't apply to us. Now, even within those movies, I think folks are still supposed to be distanced. So I don't think they're, I don't think you, I don't think you're going to have a movie theater full of folks. I think there's, they'll, they'll only sell enough tickets right now to make sure that there's proper distancing within theater. But that's just an example, but I'm just letting you know that we're in a different sector.
Yeah, it is, it is sad that some policies, like the movies or those businesses are, you know, money-driven, seems, just seems like our government seems to put money in, in, is more important than democracy, you know, when it comes to access for the public. Just frustrating. I know, not frustrating you, Mr. Hines, and I know you and I have talked about this. I just, I just, this, this, you know, when you said the thing about the money, it just, you know, I thought about Jay's comment about the blackmail earlier. It seems fitting. Anyways, so does any of the council members have comments on this report that Mr. Hines just gave?
Yes, Mr. Lozano, go ahead. I, I just one comment, thank you to staff, and, and I know I've already thanked you for this, but for getting that mobile vaccinations going. I, I know that, you know, whether or not you, you want a vaccination or not, there was a part of our community that did and were unable to, or felt like they were unable to go to a vaccination clinic. And, and that's a service that with the help of the county and the CSD, that the city was able to, to provide. And so thank, thank you to staff and, and, and our partners for, for helping our seniors.
Anybody else? No?
Mr. Mayor, if I may. If the council would indulge me, I would like to publicly thank our Parks and Rec Director, Armando Solis, for his tireless efforts in making sure that we engage the county and that we engage CSD in providing vaccination clinics here for the citizens of Galt. I have witnessed Armando's work, and I am so proud to be associated with him, his work ethic, and the things that he's doing to, to bring these clinics to the city of Galt. And so Director Solis, I just wanted to thank you publicly. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, we are still, we still have doses left over from these prior clinics that we've given. So I'm going to urge the people of Galt to come on down. There are plenty of doses available for everyone. And so, you know, there is plenty, plenty of opportunity, and so we'd like you to come down and take, and partake in it, if that's your wish. And again, another big thank you to Director Solis.
Yeah, I want to echo that, too. I know Armando's been very good about texting me, you know, on the fly and saying, hey, can you, you know, get the word out to people that you speak with, that we're going to do walk-ins only, and, you know, instead of appointments and, and kind of, it's kind of been a fluid thing. And so I appreciate him, you know, getting, trying to get out, get that word out there and, and keeping us, at least myself in the loop on that, so that I could be of help. Councilmember Vandenberg, you have a question?
Yes, I do have a quick question. Someone online asked, what version of the vaccine is being offered? Johnson and Johnson, Burdurn, which one do you know?
Is it online for Rose and Tina to read? Are there public comments, Tina or Rose?
There are no hands raised online.
No public comments.
So councilman, are you just asking what, what vaccine is available? That would be the J and J vaccine.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that. No other comments from council? All right. I just wanted to add one more thing. I did mention earlier, but I, I promised the citizen that I would ask out loud, just in case. Well, they're probably not watching, so. But I, I did have a gentleman who has attended almost every council meeting that he ever has been able to make it to, but he has not attended for almost a year because he's not computer literate and he doesn't own a cell phone. I know that's shocking, but doesn't. And he doesn't really want to call it on his home phone and listen. So again, I just want to echo, you know, I know we're doing what we can, but I just want to echo that there are people out there that are being cut off from, from the, from the, from the democratic process here of, of our council meetings because of what we are in. And I just want to encourage staff and our city manager to work diligently as quickly as he can to get us back to some normalcy on this and getting our city hall open and our meetings back to normal, as soon as we're able to. So I just wanted to just throw that out there one more time. If there's no, is there any public comment, Tina, on this matter before I move on?
No public comment.
All right. Rose, are any hands raised online?
There is none.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We will proceed on with Parks and Rec Department, City of Galt Special Event Sponsorship Program. Preview for fiscal years twenty twenty-one to twenty-two, twenty-two from Mr. Solis.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Armando Solis, Parks and Rec Director. I apologize, Jackie was going to give this item, but had to leave, take her daughter. We didn't anticipate being this late. So I'm going to muddle through this, and please bear with me. Okay, so today we have the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two Special Event Sponsorship Program. So in two thousand seventeen, the City of Galt created the Special Event Sponsorship Program. The purpose of the sponsorship policy is to set forth guidelines and criteria governing the granting of issuance of City of Galt funds or in-kind services for the purpose of supporting local festivals, special events, community projects, or programs. Sponsorship of funds or in-kind services, including but not limited, limited to contributions of staff, equipment, or other services, both participation or promotional items, will be considered for special events, community projects, or programs designed to accomplish one or more of the following goals and objectives with fifty-one percent or more of the participants from outside the sponsoring organization. So those goals and objectives are to promote the City of Galt as a desirable place to live, visit, and do business, promote the city as a visitor destination and/or bring tourism-associated revenue to the city, enhance the quality of life and well-being of the citizenry, advance the city's commitment to the pride and being multicultural community, encourage the development of neighborhood identity and pride, promote cultural artistic awareness among the citizenry, and aligns with the City of Goals, City of Galt's mission statement and/or strategic plan. So we received eight applications this year. We have the, and here's the list of them, and I'll go, I'll go over in detail of each one. So submitted Galt FFA ad boosters will have their annual dinner on the promenade. City hard costs is going to be nine hundred dollars, and that is to cover police costs to monitor the event. Every fifteen minutes event, twenty-five hundred dollars in hard costs. That's to block off streets and for police to attend. Galt Sunrise Rotary, they'll be having a fundraiser at the Littleton Center. It'd be a ticketed event. What they're asking for is just a soft cost of rental of facility. The Alumni Association for Class Reunion, they're asking us to pay for security services, and the soft costs are, is the rental facility. Chamber Wine Beer and Food Event, five hundred and seventy-five dollar security service waived is a hard cost and six fifty is a soft cost for facility rental. Another dinner put on by the chamber, same cost, five seventy-five for security services and six fifty soft cost for rental waiver. And they'll be hosting two more shows. There are, there is no security required for these as there's no alcohol in these shows. So it's just the, the rental of the facility waiver, which is a soft cost. So in total, with hard and soft costs, it's nine thousand twenty-five dollars. But for hard costs, sorry, for hard costs, it is a total of five thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. And we have seven thousand dollars budgeted for this. And I believe we have two of the applicants online, or we did, Tina? Do we still have them?
Who?
Rochelle Henderson and Robert Olson, I believe.
I do have a Bob Olson on the line.
There we go.
And excuse me, Armando, but we also do have Mark King from Rotary.
Okay. Sorry, I wasn't aware of that one.
So let me go ahead and let Bob. Bob, if you want to unmute your line, you could now speak.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Robert Olson. I'm the president of the Galt High Alumni Association. Normally, our annual dinner is to get our, our classmates and former classmates and friends from Galt together. And it's also to raise funds so we can do scholarships for Galt Joint High School Union graduates. Normally we've been sort of building up each year and, uh, able to do more and more in scholarships. Uh, uh, year before last, uh, we did, uh, uh, it was almost nine thousand, uh, this last year because we didn't have a dinner thanks to COVID. Uh, we were able, still able to give out, uh, or we will be able to give out the end of the month, five thousand, five hundred dollars thanks to some very generous donations. Uh, one of the big issues, of course, is we're hoping that, uh, the COVID restrictions will be, uh, right, you know, uh, cut back, uh, that we can use the Littleton Center. Uh, and, uh, that we can get a pretty good participation. If we're still under the, was it the, uh, purple tier, we would be limited to fifty percent capacity, which is a hundred and fifty folks. Uh, our usual break even point is, uh, we have to have a hundred and twenty. So that doesn't leave much for, you know, to go towards scholarships. So having the city help, uh, with the cost of security, uh, really makes a difference. Uh, size is anticipated five hundred. Uh, we wish that, uh, the normal, that'd be, we've been averaging closer to about two hundred. Uh, but they said each year we try to give out the, the scholarships and the chance to get folks together. My class, uh, will be celebrating their fifty-fifth plus one, uh, anniversary from graduation. And I know I've got, there's one of my classmates from Florida who will be coming in and each year we have a lot of folks coming from out of town. Uh, each year we ask you who's traveled the farthest. And we've had folks from Hawaii. You know, folks come back down from Alaska and and all over the United States. A lot of people who still are roughly in the area, but, uh, you know, or in California, so coming up, uh, uh, from other cities, uh, back to the, you know, the hometown. Uh, so we do bring business back. We've set our, our dinner is in, uh, the first Saturday in October. Uh, and that normally sort of fits with some of the other activities of the Galt Area Historical Society. So there are other things that folks can come back for, uh, and enjoy the community that, uh, we all grew up in. Uh, thank you for this opportunity. You know, and, uh, and hope you can support us. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. We appreciate, um, we appreciate everything your organization does and and, uh, we are, by the way, we are in the, the, uh, orange tier right now, so um, not purple, but, um, and hopefully we'll be, uh, you know, the red by the time your event comes. But, um, again, uh, as a Galt High Alumni, um, and both my parents will go Galt Alumni and we, we have another Councilman, Mister Vanderberg, who's Galt Alumni. We, we all share appreciation for the whole council appreciates, um, what you guys do for scholarships for, for our schools and the money you raise. So thank you for, for doing what you guys do. Thank you for your comments.
Mayor, may I add something, please?
Yeah.
I, I forgot to add that we're just presenting this information for you guys today to take, take in all the information from these events. You will not be making a decision today. You'll be making that next week. Just wanted to remind you guys. I forgot to state that.
Thank you, sir. Do we have, uh, Tina, do we have, or Tina or Rose, do we have, uh, any of the other applicants online?
We do. Um, we have Mark King from the Rotary Club and then we also have Bonnie Rodriguez that I will be letting in right after Mark King. So Mark King, if you want to go ahead and unmute your line, you can go ahead and speak.
Are you there, Mark? Go ahead. If you are. Can unmute your mic, I think, if you're there.
So why don't I go ahead and just move on to Bonnie Rodriguez and then we'll come back to Mark.
Am I un- unmuted?
You are unmuted.
Uh, thank you, Council, uh, Councilmembers for allowing us to present tonight and thank you to Parks and Rec for representing us. Um, we are just hoping to get back to some normalcy and our nor- yeah, normal, normal, uh, events. And so our events are more, we have two events that will be, be bringing in people from outside of our community, hopefully to showcase our s- community and bring these people into, uh, our local businesses. And that's with those two, the wedding event and the, uh, home and auto show. And those, uh, we are hoping, uh, to have a pretty good outreach to bring a lot of people in and to showcase especially a lot of our local businesses, uh, within the shows. Uh, our other event, the Wine Beer and Food, that obviously corresponds with the Winter Bird Festival. Uh, of course, none of us know exactly what all of this is going to look like in next year because congratulations to the city for putting on a phenomenal virtual Winter Bird Festival. Um, but we're hoping to get back into person and continue with the successful wine, beer and food events that we had in uh, previous pandemic years. And our, our fourth event is, will be our only fundraiser, true fundraiser event, which is, we are trying to bring back the Cajun Lobster Fest that we've had in the past. They've been pretty successful. Um, and it's a really fun event. And so we're really looking forward to being able to hold that fundraiser. And again, that will be our only fundraiser as, as we've been limited like all other nonprofits and even city events to uh, minimal events in the past. So if you have any questions about any of our events, I'd be happy to answer what I can. And thank you for having us here.
Could you tell us, Bonnie, about the Home and Auto Show? What exactly is that?
Um, it, it would be just like the other ones that you would see anywhere else. So we would be inviting anyone from interior to uh, interior design to gardening, to, uh, construction, to spas, what, you know, all those kinds of things, uh, dealing with homes. And the auto show, and this is more, less of a car show as it is for fixing cars and, um, uh, RVs and anything to do with autos. So, uh, my guess is since those autos, those car shows tend to pop up everywhere we go in Galt because everyone loves them. So it wouldn't be surprised if something like that showed up as well, maybe out in the parking lot or something, but that right now is not the focus. It's more about vendors.
Okay. Thank you for, uh, explaining that. Does any, Mister Lozano, you have a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, and this is for Ms. Rodriguez. Um, you know, I was thinking about the Bridle and Event Showcase and and I'm wondering if this isn't an opportunity for, um, the city to partner with the Chamber in terms of, uh, maybe offering, uh, and again, I'm maybe speaking totally out of turn here, so uh, I'm just brainstorming a little bit, but maybe offering an opportunity for, uh, the city maybe to discount, um, some rental of, um, you know, the Littleton Center for Wedding Receptions at the Bridle and Event Showcase or or something like that. Uh, where, uh, the city, uh, i- is involved in, in, uh, you know, helps in the partnership and then we draw more people in even yet on another, uh, day so that, uh, so that people would ho- host their events in, in, at the Littleton Center or Chipola. Um, just kind of throwing that out there. I, I know we're, uh, we're not approving anything tonight or doing anything like that, but I would just, uh, see if staff could work with the Chamber on, on maybe something like that if they'd be willing.
This is just me off the cuff. I think that could be a great idea, especially if then the city and the Chamber, we uh, came up with the, maybe an overall design during the event so people can see what you can do with the facilities to kind of spruce them up for a nice event. I think that's a great idea. So, um, I, and if, and if you wanted to do something up over at Chipola, I, it's my understanding right now that you don't necessarily rent that out for private events, but um, it might even be something that, you know, leasing out veterans field and how you could dress that up or something. I don't know. That's certainly something to explore.
Yeah, I actually, that was a great idea, Rich. Um, I would assume that if it's a Bridle and Event Showcase that um, that maybe the city could have a presence there that's promoting, you know, as part of the event showcase that, uh, we have a, an event facility that's available for set events and and have like a cost of what it would be and all that. I don't know. Um, if that's something we have it, thinking about doing with that, um, Armando, but that would be a great idea.
Yeah, we'll be glad to consider it.
Okay. Does any other council member have any questions? I can't see everybody because there's still the thing up, but if I go ahead and speak up if you do have a question or else we'll move on to the next person. Okay. All right. So, uh, is, is Mister King back online? I see him, his name on the screen.
Mister King, if you want to unmute your line. No.
Yeah. He's still muted.
Let me try one thing here. I just sent him a message to ask him to unmute his line. Let's see if he could see that. No, so he's still muted on his end.
Okay, all right, um.
Do we want to wait or move on?
I guess we should move on. Um, if Mister, um, if Mister King, if you're watching, if you are able to get back on and figure, you can, um, you can call in. Um, and we can try to bring you back in, in just before we finish with this item. Do we have, um, is that the end of the presentation? I'm assuming, Mister Solis, right?
Yes, it is. Um, and and the recommendation is just to review the Special Event Sponsorship Request for Fiscal Year twenty, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay, so we're just reviewing, is this an action item? Do we need to vote on this? Eric?
No, you do not need to vote on this at this point.
Mister Papin, uh, you have a question?
Not really a question, but, uh, more of an observation. The two presenters who were able to speak, and I assume we would have heard similar from the third, hopeful that by the time their events come around, uh, will be in the right tier or whatever state restriction that they can participate. I think it's worth pointing out that, um, anything after June, everybody in whatever room, Littleton Center or whatever, will either have had the vaccine or had the opportunity to have it and declined it. So they've, you know, had the vaccine or willing to take the risk. Um, you know, notwithstanding the ever-moving goalposts, whether it offers you hope or frustration, I don't see others anyway. Um, we cannot get back to normal hosting these, uh, given the situation that, uh, as I said, everybody's either had the opportunity or they're willing to take the risk. So that doesn't require a response, just for the record.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anybody else have any comments? All right, uh, then, um, we will move on. Mister King, if you are watching, we apologize for the inconvenience, but, um, we do have, uh, information on your event in our packet and, uh, you're welcome to, uh, reach out to the council individually or as a whole, uh, by email and, uh, yeah, tell us some more about your event and, uh, and, uh, share whatever with us. So our emails are online. Thank you, Mister King. Uh, moving on, Public Works Department. Subject is Proposed Administration Governance and Funding Methodology for Groundwater Management of the Consumers Sub Basin. The agenda report being presented by Mister Solling, Mister Solling.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. I'm Mike Solling, your Public Works Director. And tonight I'll be giving you a presentation, uh, and an update on the, uh, efforts concerning governance, the administration and the funding for the consumers, uh, groundwater sub-basin. See if I can get this screen sharing going. Of course, it's not showing. The one. Uh, here we are. Okay. And get this to go full. There's ever, you can see that hopefully?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. So some background to get started. As you may recall from the prior presentation I made to the council back in December of last year, the state passed the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, or SIGMA as we refer to it, in two thousand and fourteen. The key aspects of SIGMA is first, it requires all overdrafted basins to develop a groundwater sustainability plan or G S P as the acronym, and there's going to be a fair number of acronyms, uh, in this. And the G S P, the plan is due for us, it's due by January thirty-first of next year, twenty twenty-two. Um, since the consumers is considered a medium priority basin by the state. Uh, so we have basically twenty years, uh, to demonstrate sustainability of the basin. Uh, so twenty forty-two would be that deadline. And then it preferred that sustainability be achieved via local management. Um, so that's groundwater sustainability agencies or what we call GSAs, of which the city is one of seven, uh, for the consumers sub-basin. Rather than the state, uh, having, uh, management and take it over from the local, uh, control. So as the city has jurisdiction of its portion of the basin within the city limits, uh, the city declared itself a G S A back in two thousand and seventeen. And as I mentioned, there are six other GSAs within our basin that we're working cooperatively with, uh, to come up, uh, with this plan. And we're doing that through a couple of framework agreements that were passed, uh, first in two thousand and seventeen. And then the second one was earlier, uh, last year in May. Yeah. Did I? Okay. So this map basically shows the basin and the seven GSAs, uh, which the city is one. The city's portion is in the pink, which is kind of in the lower left uh, of the map there. And, uh, so since December, we've also, uh, submitted the recent annexations we have for Summerfield, for the Notch Annexation, and then for the County Island portion. And those have been submitted to the state and those changes will be reflected on the map, uh, as the city's, uh, boundary essentially grows with those annexations. And those affected, uh, essentially the Slough House Resource Conservation District, which is the kind of orange color. The Galt Irrigation District immediately to our, uh, east, which is the green color, and then the County Island portion. You can't really see it. It's really small. Uh, that's kind of the, um, diagonal hatched, uh, area. And so that's those. So the G S A group has a technical consultant that's under contract to the county. The consultant has done extensive work in gathering data and modeling the basin. And from that work, it's been determined that the basin has an average historical overdraft of approximately eleven thousand, six hundred acre feet per year. So that is the excess amount of water that's being drawn or extracted from the basin over what's actually flowing back into the basin or recharge is, is the term that we use. Uh, the consultant has further identified a goal of twenty thousand acre feet per year that's needed to mitigate this overdraft amount. The group has identified several projects and management or conservation actions in an effort to achieve that goal. And I'll get into more detail on, on those projects in the next slide. Uh, the consultant is currently analyzing, uh, those projects to determine how much each one can help offset the overdraft. And the difference between that twenty thousand acre feet and the eleven thousand, six hundred of actual overdraft, that's, uh, a recommended cushion, if you will, or contingency, in case one or more of these projects have a lower than expected yield. Uh, or, you know, there may be some delay in, in implementation of one or more of these projects. For the projects and management actions, the plan needs to specify how they will work, uh, quantify the amount of recharge or conservation each is anticipated to achieve and a timeframe for each. Obviously, some projects will take a few years to get through the planning process and then may also take some additional time, uh, to achieve, uh, full funding status. As noted, uh, and this is on the project side, the city share is relatively small, as you can see here, compared to some of the ag entities. However, the state looks at each basin as a whole, so it's key that we work together cooperatively with the other, uh, GSAs and coordinate our efforts. So as far as some of the projects in, in trying to achieve this, uh, goal, um, that have been identified so far, the city, we've proposed to use our wastewater treatment plant, F-Lent. Basically, this is the, you know, relatively clean water, uh, that comes out of the treatment plant, uh, to use it for ag irrigation on, uh, surrounding, uh, lands. And we estimate that this would provide approximately fourteen hundred acre feet per year. And we estimate that this would provide approximately fourteen hundred acre feet per year of pumpage savings. And then a similar project using treated effluent from the from the SAC regional wastewater facility. Is expected to provide another two thousand acre feet annually toward that goal. There's one of the GSAs, Omahamni Hartnow, or OH, as we commonly refer to them. They have two projects that they've identified. One is a recharge project using excess wet winter water. So if you have excess flood flows in the river, they can divert those onto adjacent ag lands. And I think they've got some great fields there that they would propose to divert any additional wet winter water onto. And then also a flow augmentation project where they would take. Surface water that they've stored that's outside the basin and use that to basically pre-wet the Consumnis River. Which helps further recharge as the Consumnis starts to flow in the in the fall when the rains come. And then another project is fallowing. And basically, all this is taking ag land out of production. Pretty straightforward. And so typically, these would be things like row crops, you know, seasonal crops, that nature, sometimes feed crops. And that's a completely voluntary thing. And the farmer owner is paid basically to take their their land out of production. Then the last biggest project that I've shown here would be a potential partnering project with the Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency. Or SAFECA, as we call them. And this would basically be to take excess winter floodwater again from the American River. Down the Folsom South Canal, where it'd be stored for future non-winter distribution. This will require some agreements with SAFECA and others, and likely take a few years to put into place. So this is a bit of a longer-term project. But it's it's very innovative, you know, kind of noted here on the slide, cost-effective. And has multiple benefits, both for ag and for urban, as well as the environment too. So. And if it implemented, it would go a long way to helping us meet our goals, you can see by the projected amount of. Water there as far as toward the goal fifteen thousand acre feet per year. So under the current proposed plan, some of the estimated costs. For the ongoing annual administration, which includes monitoring, reporting, along with several other efforts such as annual audit. Data management, legal support, outreach, grant efforts, et cetera. This is estimated to be somewhere around a half a million dollar mark annually. And this is expected to be funded by fee programs. Between the various GSAs or in-kind contributions, which is what is envisioned for the city. And I'll kind of talk about that, too. The the challenges here is there are some legalities that are still need to be worked out. And so we've started involving legal counsel to to help us through that. With regard to the projects and management actions, the cost estimates are still being refined. Current estimates are around one and a half million to maybe one point eight million dollars per year. Revenue sources include the fee programs, potential sale of excess waters, like I kind of noted with some of those those projects. That we can get from the wet winter water, so we can potentially resell that water and and take that revenue. And then like the SAFECA project, which is what they call a managed aquifer recharge project. And then also possible grant funding and then revenue from potential sale of the stored waters, as I mentioned. And then maybe, as you can hopefully start to understand, there's a lot of moving parts to this, which are still being analyzed and worked out. You know, for example, I mean, we don't know how many farmers may be willing to put their land into into fallow. And then we also don't know how much, you know, of that wet winter water we could expect to get, how many acre feet. We also don't know how frequent that may be, you know, drought conditions or something like that, you know, may may make it non-viable in certain years kind of thing. Other alternatives. So there are some other alternatives. Short answer is yes, but they are costly. And as you can kind of see here, first option would be to fallow as much as seventy-two hundred acres. And that would basically achieve that twenty thousand acre foot per year goal. The problem with it is the cost. And we're looking at a cost probably somewhere around five hundred dollars per acre. Which is what would need to be paid to farmers. And so you do the quick math and we're, you know, close approaching four million dollars. Another option would be to purchase the water from water purveyors like East Bay Mud and others. And you know, a key challenge for us there is we don't have all the conveyance systems in place to get that water every place it may need to be. Transferred to, i.e. like canals and pipelines. So there would be some additional infrastructure costs in order to, you know, get that. That conveyance system in place. And given the current current, what they call wheeling rates, which is basically the transference. Costs of water, the price tag on this option is somewhere around ten and a half million dollars, as you can see there. And and that's roughly based on a five hundred dollar per acre foot charge. And I can tell you that that's actually pretty cheap water when you get down to. When you get down to it. So I think that the costs on this option are probably significantly higher potentially. Again, the consultant's working on this stuff, and so we'll hopefully have some better numbers in the coming months. And then lastly, I mean, I kind of touched on it before, we could do nothing and basically let the state take over. We'd essentially be giving away, you know, the proverbial keys to do that, to let them take control. And but it would also come at a considerable cost, you know, based on what the state has in in the guidelines if they were to take over. There's certain fees per well and then certain amounts per acre foot and whatnot. The total cost on that is probably somewhere upwards of five million dollars. So and while the way that the state fees are structured, it hits ag harder than it would hit the city on the urban side. The the city's cost would probably be somewhere around one and a half to maybe twice what we're estimating for. The current plan that we're we're working on proposing. So now we touched on on the costs and projects. I wanted to touch on the proposed governance structure. So the structure that we've been working on is a Joint Powers Agreement, or JPA, another one of those acronyms I mentioned. Where each agency has a single representative on the Consumnis Groundwater Authority Board. So there would be seven board members. And each agency's member has a single vote. It's not weighted by acres or population or the amount of water used. So it's just a straight one vote per agency. The authority board would have typical powers to provide for the ongoing management, reporting, contract authority. Funds collection, basically taking those fees from the various GSAs to use toward the projects and and administrative costs. And, you know, dispersing those funds, project approvals, staff oversight, there's probably the envision right now, probably one. One staff position as far as like an executive director for the authority. There may be some additional part-time clerical type staffing as well. And then various other administrative functions. Funding again would be utilized from the ongoing administration of the GSP of the plan, the Melor Sustainability Plan. And then implementation of the projects and management actions. Currently, the county with concurrence from the other GSA staff representatives has taken the lead to develop a fee program. And recently recently initiated this this fee nexus study. They've hired a consultant and who has started that effort. It's anticipated that it would be based on parcel size categories. And there are some legalities as to how this could be done, which are still in discussions. Just another aspect of. The attorneys, you know, assisting us in that effort. The thought would be as far as the categories. You know, for the city I mentioned before, that we would have a contribution. As you can imagine, the city has, well, on the basin, I think there's around sixteen thousand or so parcels. And we have just about half of those parcels. And our parcels are really small compared to the ag parcels, which are, you know, several acres typically. So the the thought is the fee program would have these categories if you're under two acres, say, or between two and ten. Or between ten and twenty or twenty and fifty kind of thing or over fifty. So those would be kind of the size categories that they're looking at. But for like the city, and there's a couple others. Amador County is a separate county. So SAC County can't impose a fee program on a separate county. So Amador would have a contribution, probably somewhere along the lines of half of what the cities would be. And then Rancho Murieta, while they would not be required to, there have been some preliminary discussions with them. From the GSA that they're located in Slough House, that they would make some some contribution. And the reason that they are not really subject to it is they're, all their water comes from surface water, it doesn't come from groundwater, so. So anyway, that's kind of, you know, what's what's in the works as far as the fee program that the that the county has initiated. And, you know, stay tuned for more to come on that. So as far as the the proposed fee structure, you know, I've kind of talked about it a couple times here. There's really two main components. On all this, one is the ongoing administration, you know, monitoring and whatnot, reporting. And then the second is the projects and management actions. And so on the rural side, which doesn't include us, the proposed fee structure again would. It's still preliminary and subject to change for the ongoing administration piece. But it will likely be funded by these set fee amounts based on the parcel sizes I just noted. For projects and management actions, the current thinking is this portion will be based proportionately on the amount of water pumped. So the more you pump, the more you pay toward the project costs. The various projects and management action costs still being refined, as I as I mentioned earlier. And that's expected to be completed in probably the next, oh, I'd say thirty to forty-five days or so. So far on the city side, Gulf, as I noted, would make a contribution. You know, it becomes very difficult based on our small parcel sizes, as I mentioned. And preliminarily, we are estimating the city's contribution to be somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars, depending on how you calculate it. We've done some preliminary calculations. It could be a bit more. I don't want to get, you know, too committal on that because we'll have to kind of wait for this this nexus study to to play out and and see where we're at. But that's probably a reasonable number, at least to start with. You know, we'll have to see as as project costs, you know, start to come online in later years. There may be some, and depending on again on how much we pump, how much we grow, there may it may be a bit higher than that. But but anyway, that's kind of a rough number for now. So we would look to pay for that first year contribution from our Fund Five Water Fund budget. We've got some reserves that we could. We could cover that cost for the first year. The city does have a a cost of service study that's slated to start. Later this calendar year. And we'll be looking, you know, essentially at our at our normal water rates. But then having to roll this piece of the management into those rates as well. So so future years, we would, you know, through that cost of service study, we would determine what those would be. And, you know, how much that may add on to each each customer's bill. So as far as next steps, outreach will continue through the summer. And there the next workshop actually is scheduled for May twenty-sixth. We had one back on March twenty-fourth. It was well-attended. And I know that they're planning at least one and maybe two more through the summer of these public workshops. And I think we had, gosh, I think it was close to ninety or so folks on that first one in March. So it's some good attendance on that. And then through other opportunities such as this presentation tonight, the various GSAs may be doing, you know, in their. In their neck of the woods kind of thing. So the project and and management action modeling for how each project. May be able to contribute in savings or recharge toward that twenty thousand acre foot per year goal. Is expected to be completed in the next couple, two, three months. The Joint Powers Agreement is currently routing for final draft review amongst the the staff level. And like I said, we've gotten the the attorneys involved. And so they're they're very much looking at it from. The legality aspects, too. You know, agency approvals on that JPA, we would expect those to start occurring, maybe later this summer in July and August. And then the county's fee nexus study, as I mentioned, while it's just started, we would expect that that would hopefully be completed by August. Possibly a little bit sooner. And then lastly, the groundwater sustainability plan itself will be out in draft form, probably midsummer. For public review and would look to take that document once, you know, get comments from the public, refine it, make any modifications. Any modeling updates to take it, take the final to the governing bodies. Toward the very end of the year, like November, December timeframe, so that that way the final approved by all the agencies. GSP can be submitted to the state by the end of January of next year. And so, Mr. Mayor and council members, this concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
All right. Do we have any comment? With Vice Mayor, and did you have any comments?
Thank you for the report. I do not have any question this time. Yeah, the seven GSA, and then you said this can be a, so we representing. Who will be kind of responsible from each GSA's, can be council member or from staff?
Yeah, great question, Vice Mayor. So essentially, on the envisioned Consumnis groundwater. Basin authority, that would be an elected member from each of the GSAs. So it'd be one of you from the council.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't have no further questions.
Mike, can you unshare your screen so we can?
No, oh, I think, let me stop share. I found it this time. Thank you.
Councilman Papina, do you have any comments on this item?
My only comment is I've never been a farmer. However, an estimate of five hundred dollars an acre, that may, I presume, cover. The the farmer's profit and perhaps some employees that are going to be out of work. With a with fallow land. But and it's probably a little bit down the road, but certainly worth considering what that does to the rest of the economy as far as. You know, not only employment, but supplies and price increases. You know, as far as a feed and so forth. So that's just just kind of a a comment going forward to something to consider.
There are good questions. Councilor, do you have anything?
Yeah, I was I was just curious if, I mean, obviously, this is a, you know, a statewide issue when you really break it down. Is there any longer-term plans by the state or anyone locally for more lakes? And or manual recharging of the reservoir?
Yeah, great question, council member. We are not aware of any active. Projects in our region at this time for more surface water storage, is what I think you're getting at. Yeah, nothing, nothing at this time in this area. There are a few projects that have been on the books, you know, some for many, many years, decades. You know, the Auburn Dam is the one that certainly comes to mind. Sykes Reservoir, there are a few others, too. And I know there's some, you know, good activity on the Sykes, but again, not in our area. And it's a, it's it's a tough challenge. You know, I I also know that, you know, from several decades past, there have been other very large reservoir projects that were planned. That just never came to fruition. And and I think just, you know, with different different political climate in the state. You know, the those projects are probably, you know. Very unlikely to ever see fruition, so.
Is there any programs for farmers to make their own, like mini reservoirs to pull from? You know, retain surface water during the winter and irrigate with that?
Yeah, that would be, you know, on an individual basis. And I believe through probably US Farmland of Ag or whatnot. I don't know the specifics of the process they would be looking to, but probably Army Corps of Engineers. You know, there's the. The waters of the US. Gosh, probably five, six years ago or so, seven. There were some significant changes by EPA that really were essentially jurisdictional. Control, I guess, measures that they essentially. Control, I guess, measures that they essentially. Made that very challenging, I guess, is how I'll characterize it to for, you know, a given landowner or farmer to to get a a stock pond or whatnot permitted, so.
Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vandenberg. Councilmember Lozano.
No, I have nothing. Just, Mike, thank you for the thorough report, and I appreciate you taking the time to to walk us through it.
Sure.
All right. And for me, same thing. Thank you for a very thorough presentation. Actually, one, just one question for the run water. I have people asking about, you know, if you've heard anything again from the state on, you know, water restrictions or any changes with that because of the, you know, the all the news about the drought and such, anything on that front yet?
Yeah, I think there was some information. Well, we got a letter two, three weeks ago now, I want to say. And I think some of the information made it in the biweekly. But yeah, maybe just to reiterate that here, you know, the the, I think it was through the end of March, the snowpack was only about fifty-eight percent. Of normal, and this is kind of essentially the second subnormal year concurrent, two years running now. And so we would anticipate the state will probably be, you know, depending on, you know, obviously what happens by the next thirty days or so. Handing down some further, you know, guidance to municipalities as far as to, you know, start employing additional conservation measures. So I would anticipate that, like I said, within the next thirty days.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions, so don't require any action on this. So thank you again, Mike, for a thorough presentation. Do we have any public comment? Item?
No public comment.
And any hands raised online, Rose?
We do not have any hands raised.
Okay. All right, then we will. Thank you, Mr. Selling. We'll move on to item I, communication. Do we have any communication this evening?
Not this evening.
Item J, City Clerk's Report.
Nothing this evening.
Comments by staff, Mr. Heinz.
Yes, give me just a second here. Can you all see the Connect with Galt?
Yes.
Very good. So I wanted to let the public know that we released the newsletter last week. It's our first edition of Connect with Galt. This newsletter will replace the city manager biweekly report. It provides, I believe, a little more flair as far as enticing the reader to read through the articles. As you can see, we're got a great header here. We're talking about First Thursdays, any upcoming events that are occurring in the city. A big informational, colorful item here regarding the farmer's market, vaccination updates. We're encouraging folks to join a commission or committee, information on COVID nineteen signups, Lincoln Way trash cleanup. We've got some issues regarding increase in vandalism, and so this is our response to that. We've got banners installed, and there's, of course, there's information about the Galt Market Plan. And by the way, the city was awarded an achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the government for the Government Finance Officers Association. So well done, Claire Tyson and her group. But all of this is located in our first edition of the Connect with Galt. And so we hope that this will make reading about city events and city news a little more pleasurable for our citizens. And and we also invite you to sign up. We sent this circular out to a little over a thousand emails on April thirtieth. We'll be able to track the stats and and see how folks are enjoying the newsletter. For those folks who aren't signed up, you can sign up through our Facebook links, and and we encourage you to do that. Hats off to Amy Mendez, her Economic Development Manager, for all of her work on this newsletter. I also wanted to comment on some of the public comments that we received tonight. Bob and Tara Wilson, we did speak to both of those individuals while we, when we presented the Galt Market Plan to the Beautification Committee. So I was aware of her suggestions regarding the vocational school, and it's great that she brought also brought that to the council. We will also look at her suggestions for bocce ball, which I'm a fan of, and parking and rooftop event. So Bob and Tara, thank you so much for that suggestion. Joe Patondo, we I'll look into the issue with the refrigerator, and I'll brief council at some point in the near future. Regarding the Lions Club, our our Community Development Director Craig Hoffman has been trying, reaching out to the Lions, and I think he's going to continue to do that. So we can set up a meeting and get the Galt Market Plan in front of them, and also for me to meet them. So I'm looking forward to that. And one last thing about Mr. Patondo, he has actually signed up for my first Thursday in June. And so, and speaking of First Thursdays, we advertise First Thursdays with the city manager. That's me. And so folks can set up an appointment. We'll set up a Zoom or a phone call. And where you can talk directly to me about any issues or concerns that you have with the city or any questions that you may have about city policy or city actions. And and the question is, why did we do that? And so, you know, I'm able to give you that information, so you hear it directly from the source, so to speak. Mr. Patondo has signed up for one of those slots in June. We also have another slot already filled in June. By the way, the slots for Thursday, a couple of days from now, they're all full. So I am I'm flattered that folks are interested in talking with me and talking about issues that are important to our city. So we're full, we're full now, and we're half full in June already. So that's that's good news. The other thing I wanted to mention to the council and the public is that I attended the Public Safety Committee last night. And during the Public Safety Committee, and the mayor, I mentioned this earlier in the meeting, but I wanted to add some more specifics. So we attended the Public Safety Meeting last night. This is chaired by the mayor. Interim Chief Small also attended the event. And so the Public Safety Committee came up with a three-pronged approach when it comes to reporting traffic concerns. And so what we want to do is set up an approach that allows folks to communicate traffic concerns to us via an online portal. Via phone and via text. And so we currently have an online link on the Galt Galt PD's website. But what we're going to try to do is elevate the visibility of that link to make it easier for the user to use that particular tool to communicate with us. With phones, we want to set up a phone number that can dial direct into a traffic complaint voicemail, which will be monitored and responded to by members of the Galt PD. And then as texts, we want to set up a text phone number, and we want that phone number to convert the text to an email. So that information gets out to the motor officers immediately to address any issues that that the person wants to discuss. I want to thank the mayor, the Public Safety Committee, and Interim Chief Small for developing this strategy. I think it was a great conversation. And well done, well done. And, Mr. Mayor, that's it for my comments. I'm going to go around the horn here and speak with the staff. And let's start with Finance Director Claire Tyson, who just received the Financial Excellence Award from the Government Finance Officers of America.
Thank you so much for that recognition. Yes, a hardworking team that I work with, and yeah, they they delivered. So thank you very much. I don't have anything further to report this evening. Thank you.
All righty. Parks and Rec Director Armando Solis.
Yes, please bear with me. I have a lot of thank yous to give out. So at our five twenty-four vaccine event, we had over thirty volunteers there. And Cal Waste provided a donation to purchase sandwiches for these volunteers. Togo's gave us a discounted price. Walmart provided water and some bars, breakfast bars. And then South County Services provided volunteers. Sacramento County was involved. Dr. Oshida stepped in at the last minute to be the medical provider for that event. So I want to thank him. And the LDS Church sent a bunch of volunteers also. Then the mobile vaccine event and the event on five twenty-nine, CSD Fire was incredible. South County Services sent more people. The Commission on Aging came out and helped all all five commissioners, Surtim and Sac County. So I just want to thank all of those people publicly. And I wanted to let the council know that the Galt Gator Program has started. They started yesterday. So they're out at the pool with the modifications that the county's put in place. And then starting next week, we'll be accepting registrations for adult softball. So thank you, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Yes, Mr. Solis, I do have a question, and thank you. Thank you for thanking all those people, and it's important that. All the people in the community that come out and do things always, that we try to get, you know, some gratitude to them. It doesn't always take place, but thank you for doing that. I just, this is maybe not exactly related, but I had an inquiry about the flags being at half mast. I I noticed the one in alternate of not no longer a half mast, so this might have been something a few days ago. What was that regarding? I just, I wasn't able to answer that question.
Honestly, I I don't know. We get these notifications and what they're for, and I I can't remember the when the president issues a. I believe a proclamation to move them to half staff. We are ordered to do so, and we do that when ordered to.
Okay.
We can send that information out if you'd like in the future as to why they are.
Go ahead.
I believe one of the the vice mayor, that's why the. One of the vice mayor is back in, I I believe, what nineteen seventy-eight to nineteen eighty-something died. That's why that.
Walter Mondale, the Vice President?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Was that?
That's why I get noticed. I get an e-mail, too.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Paul. I I thought, yeah, I I heard about that. I thought it was something else. I thought that was older, but. But yeah, I mean, just, it's not super important, but I think when people see that, they always wonder why, well, why, you know, in case it's somebody that's not like front and center and headlines. Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't want you to like take a bunch of time to do it, but if you were able to farm that out on social media or something, that would be nice, I guess, but not not imperative. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Solis.
Great. Thank you. Our Community Development Director Craig Hoffman. I know you've been busy tonight, but let's see if you have anything else for us.
Nothing further for tonight. I know our consultants are working right now, and we'll get the Housing Elements Meditate CD. But thank you all for your comments, and that's it for tonight.
All right. Thank you. Well done earlier. Public Works Director Mike Selling.
Just real quick, I failed to mention it in my presentation. If anybody's interested in getting information about, you know, the activities and the upcoming workshops and whatnot. As far as the groundwater basin management effort, the website is consumenesswaterforum.org. And we can put that in the biweekly and social media and whatnot, but consumenesswaterforum.org. And there's lots of good information there. So just want to put that tool out there. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Human Resources Director Stephanie Van Stein.
No update this evening. Thank you.
Thanks. City Attorney Harriet Steiner.
Well, for me, it's been a very quiet evening, but it's been very interesting listening to everyone and all the presentations. So thank you, but I have nothing else to announce.
All right. Very good. Economic Development Manager Amy Mendez.
No, I have nothing further this evening.
Okay, thanks. And joining us for the first time as interim chief, I believe this is his first time, interim chief Rick Small.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. It is my first experience at a council meeting in this role, so I appreciate the opportunity. I do have two really quick things I'd like to share. Both of these are on our social media pages, specifically Facebook, if you want additional information. But for the sake of time, I will keep it short. Our detectives were started working a case in twenty eighteen and just recently secured a guilty plea in federal court. For a pretty significant case that required significant resources and a lot of coordination with the state and federal agencies. So I want to recognize their work on that. Also, you know, talk about impacts to the pandemic or from the pandemic. For the last fifteen years or so, or I'm sorry, fifteen years or so, we've been in the schools doing our character counts program, specifically TJ Goddaddy's in charge of that. This year, obviously, we had some challenges because the kids were not in school, but we were able to work around that. And with the help of the schools and the and the support of the teachers, we were able to still do that program via Zoom. This required a little over a hundred meetings on TJ's part. But he was able to make it work with all the schools that wanted to participate, and so we were able to continue that program and be in the schools, talking to the kids even during the pandemic. So kudos to him and the school for their willingness to allow us to do that.
All right. Thank you, chief, and do me a favor. Send my send my best to TJ. Tell him job well done.
Will do.
All righty. City Clerk Tina Huber.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Right. Administrative Assistant Rose Roedacker.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to just say one final thing. There was one, another public comment about parking at the Galt Market. I, we had one of our citizens have an issue with parking. I did reach out to the individual who submitted that particular public comment, and they did indicate that the person did not leave their name. And so I asked if that, I asked this person that if that person who made the complaint comes back with another complaint. To relay that the city manager would like to chat with them, and I realized they didn't want to leave the information with the other person, but I really would appreciate chatting with them. We're in the business of solving problems, and it's easier for us to do that if we hear the complaint directly. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate your continued efforts to to reach out to the community. I will go around the horn here with the council. We'll start with our Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Just very short. First of all, welcome, Mr. Small, as interim chief. The, I also like to thank you all the public comment, and I also like to thank you, Mr. Heinz. He gave the feedback right on this meeting. Thank you, Mr. Heinz, to give all of Bob Wilson, Joe Patondo, and somebody anonymous from the chamber. Thank you. I also attended the, on April twenty-fourth, the vaccination event. I met with Mr. Heinz over there, Mr. Solis, Board of Supervisor Donatoli, and also Dr. Kessari. And it was well organized. Again, I thank you, Mr. Solis. He went well organized. Thank you. I also like to thank you all the staff, doing a great job. Give us a good report. Thank you.
And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Councilmember Papin.
Yeah, at the risk of being redundant, thank you to the staff and treasurer and consultants. I very much appreciate the concise, yet thorough reports. And regarding the Public Safety Meeting, much appreciated that. It was evident. We have a very bright group of committee members, and they work well with the chiefs. So it was good to see solutions come in short order there, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Vandenberg.
Thank you, everyone, for your hard work. Interim Police Chief, I wish you the best of luck. To all those people that have public comment, please encourage others to do the same. It's one of the best ways we can hear from the public, and it's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vandenberg. Councilmember Lozano.
Yeah, I also attended the Public Safety Committee. I just want to echo what Councilmember Papin said about the the group of members we have. They're very, very articulate and bright, and and I also was pleased to see that they were able to come up with some really quick solutions to to, or at least a starting point, I should say. And so that was that was really. To, or at least a starting point, I should say. And so that was, that was really cool. I also had the ability to attend the Youth Commission Meeting and see off the youth commissioners that were going off. Off cycle last night. And one of the things that I pointed out to them is, you know, when I think of the Youth Commission, I don't just think of. Their ability to be out in the community and volunteering. I mean, that's part of it. But the other part that I, that really has impressed me with them is a couple of the meetings that I've attended. Their, their, their leadership ability is just amazing. Far greater than it was when I was a 15, 16, 17-year-old. And they're just, they're, they're bright young people. And so I would, I mean, I would really, and I encouraged them, you know, continue that down that path of leadership. And, and building their skill sets. One of the things that impressed me the most was there. They were trained on how to do an elevator. Chat. And, you know, it's a couple of minutes, you know, here's who I am, this is what I do. And it was just really worked well. And so I think that will benefit the city in so many ways moving forward and, and them personally. So thank them for that. And I also do want to thank, and I did last night, but John Gordon, who is. You know, has been not officially on the committee as an adult mentor for a few months, but has stuck around and helped bridge that gap. And I thank him for his service of, I think, seven years on the, on the committee. And so the Youth Commission is an adult mentor and is, is, he's certainly going to be missed. But hopefully they'll continue down the road of, you know, providing that leadership training for youth. And, and, and continuing that work. So. Lastly, just interim chief small. Welcome to the role. And I know you'll do a fine job. And if you need anything, call Mr. Heinz, not me. No, but you'll do a fine job. Thanks, thanks for it. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Lozano. Yeah, I just want to echo some of what my council member said about the public input. We appreciate the input and we encourage more. Welcome interim chief small and I wish you good luck in your, in your six months ahead of you. And I want to thank you for your hard work and participation with the, the fast work with the special safety meeting. And coming up with helping the, you know, the committee last night, help come up with, like it's been said, some great ideas. It was, it was good, good, good input. And we came up, I think, what is a good starting point and honestly, some course of action. For something that's, that's important to people in town. So thank you for that, sir.
If I could, Mayor, real quick, thank you all for the, for the welcome. I greatly appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely. Congrats to Claire and your staff for your award. And thank you to Amy Mendez and whoever else was involved with the creation of the Connect with Galt. I really like that as, as I think everybody on this council, as, as stated over and over and over, we want absolute maximum community engagement. I think that's a huge step in that, in that. And I thank you, Mr. Heinz, for, you know, facilitating that. And I encourage people to sign up. Check it out on City's Facebook page and sign up for that. Just a couple, couple of quick events. We got tea at the Ray House this, this Saturday, May 8th. Hosted by the Galt Historical Society. It's a great event. You don't have to pre-purchase, take in advance, you can show up. So that will be, you can find information on that online. Vax, Vaxthing Clinic tomorrow at the market. It's a walk-in, so you don't need an appointment. Community cleanup by the Youth Commission on Beautification on Lincoln Way. Show up if you're interested in helping keep our, our town clean, which I'm very passionate about. May 15th, Saturday, show up at Smud Park at nine o'clock. Everything's provided. You don't need anything but just ambition. And, and two working hands and two working feet. And we'll find some stuff for you to do. So show up and help out. And I think that will do it. I feel like there's something else I'm forgetting. But apologies again to Craig and, and the other consultants right here. Hopefully you guys didn't. Didn't, I didn't be up too bad with my comments. I appreciate all the hard work on that, Craig. As, as you know, when we spoke, it's a difficult, you're making lemons, lemonade out of lemon. So we appreciate that. And without further ado, everybody have a great week and, and weekend and be safe out there and enjoy your evening. May a good journey.